All right, good evening everyone, welcome to Town Hall. Today is Monday, October 27. We're here for our normally scheduled regular Town Council meeting. First order of business as always, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement statement. The town of South Kingston pays homage to the indigenous people and land on which the town is now located, but this acknowledgement serves as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Narragansett Tribe, whose land and water we benefit from today. Next we have the roll call.
Council President McIntyre.
Here.
Council Vice President Marion.
Here.
Council Member Bergner.
Council Member Alley.
Here.
Council Member Wedgemont.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve items three, A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next we have interviews. We want to go in the order in which they appear in the agenda. So first up, we have Sam Grimley looking to be reappointed to the Waterfront Advisory Commission. And just to sort of set some basic, you know, what we're looking for from all those who are being reappointed tonight, this is an opportunity for you to tell us what's going on in your respective committee, sort of inform us, brief us, how it's not, you know, we don't always have the opportunity to hear from you, maybe once a quarter if that, so, you know, this is always a good opportunity to hear from an active member, but Sam, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Oh, could you put the, the mic on? On the button on the right? Thank you.
How about that?
Yep.
All right. Yeah, so good evening, thanks for having me. I've been serving on the, the Waterfront Advisory Commission for two terms now, so for, for the last six years, and I'm keen to continue and renew my term. Some big wins for the commission, updating the harbor management plan, as you know, that documents all of the public access points found within the town, not just the ones that the town owns, but all throughout the town. We've worked hard on the, the updating of the Marina Park boat ramp as well, too. We stewarded that process, we've advocated for funding for that effort as well. And more recently, the effort to install kayak racks at Lake Avenue. We really looked at, you know, compromising there and finding a compatible situation for all stakeholders involved. So these are the types of efforts that the commission has been working hard on and would like to continue to do so. Happy to take questions.
Any questions for Sam?
Good.
Sure. First, thank you for your work and the commission's work, particularly with regard to the Marina Landing, that worked out terrific. And second, the kayak thing was very helpful to the council in understanding what the commi- what the commission had done. Two areas I'd like to hear what you think about are the Marina and mooring space issues that we have, excuse me, well, go with that first.
Okay. Yeah, so my, my view on that is, you know, I think it's, it's a really challenging situation to navigate. In the last five to 10 years here, we've seen influx of, of boaters demanding those space. I, you know, my own personal opinion, I would, since the town maintains Marina Park and has dock space there and maintains dock space there, that I see an opportunity for, you know, potentially opening up some of those dock spaces for residents as well, too, given that I know, you know, they've been priced out of a lot of the areas, the private marinas, so trying to figure out a way to use that in the best interest of the citizens of the town. And the same thing with the moorings, I think the system that's been set up and works well, where you apply, you get on the waitlist, and, you know, it's just, we took a similar approach with those kayak racks when we were trying to get space for the kayak racks. So I think just, you know, doing what you can that's in the best interest of the citizens and making sure that you can, you know, appease as many stakeholders as possible, which isn't always an easy thing when you have limited resources, but.
And the second thing I wanted to ask you about was where the commission's at and what you think about the title search and the lateral access for the beaches.
Sure, so, yeah, the, the Charlestown Beach Road monumenting is, that was high on my list of, of wins. I know that's ongoing now, and I think we need to do more of that. You know, I think, you know, the, the public trust doctrine in the Rhode Island State Constitution grants, you know, access to the shore, provides access to the shore, but it's, it's up to the commission to make sure that those access points exist, so people can get down to that public resource, that land, and, and use that as, as stated in the constitution. So we're gonna need to see, you know, probably more of that, that monumenting, the finding of property lines, boundaries, to make sure that we maintain those public access points.
And I don't want to, last thing, I don't want to get ahead, but after the, the title searches are done and we identify the access points, I'd like to see the commission come to the council with recommendations for parking, and parking issues, so that people can actually use them, not just have a path, but have a place to put their car. It may involve boating vehicles, I don't know.
Yep. No, it's a, it's a great point, and I think the commission would be thrilled to hear that and provide some guidance on that. It's something we've done in every single access point in the harbor management plan. You can actually look, there is a, a parking section, and we lay out recommendations for parking. We've already started, you know, just kind of brainstorming ideas around Charlestown Beach Road, you know, obviously waiting for the title searches and the monumenting to be done, but just, so it is, it is at the forefront of the commission members' minds, and we, you know, we'd be honored to be able to bring that back to you all with some suggestions.
That one is gonna be like a law, a law school nightmare. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Sam, I don't have a question, but I just did want to thank you and, and your fellow commission members. You really all take a proactive step in preserving public access for our residents and Rhode Islanders, and, you know, talking about the Marina Park, the monumenting you've been doing, and just to echo what the Vice President said, come back to us and give us some direction of where we should need to go, because so far you've been doing a great job, and thank you for your two terms already.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and I would just add, I think, you know, where you're going with the master plan, too, that lends itself nicely to be able to develop those, maintain those public access points as well, so we look forward to working with the council on that.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you. It's very difficult when, you know, the five of us, I don't think anybody owns a boat or, you know, any longer, maybe we own kayaks, but just to recognize the expertise that all of you come with, and also to turn around information quickly. I know when we did the kayak racks, we were like, help us figure out what the fee structure should be, and you came back really quickly, and so that's a great example of a symbiotic relationship between the council and, and that board and commission. I know we have with others, but you're the one that I think a lot of people value in terms of, like, we all want to have access to the water, and you're advocates in that area, so I appreciate you, and I'm excited to reappoint you in a couple hours.
Well, well, thanks, I do appreciate it. I feel very fortunate to work alongside other commissioners that are just as passionate about this stuff as I am, so it's worked out really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. All set?
Yep.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
All right, next up we got William Rosen looking to be reappointed to the trustees of the South Kingston School Funds.
This committee is probably unique in the sense that we report to you on what the financial advisor to the portfolio that we have, and how well he is do- he or she is doing. Webster Banks is, is your financial advisor. We as a committee overlook the portfolio that has grown over the last 300 years or so, but as you well know, 90% of that portfolio goes to the Neighborhood Guild, and that is what takes up most of, of the funds that are brought back as a result of the rules that the committee has put together and that you have approved. So just to let you know, we just had a meeting about a week ago. The portfolio now stands at about $26 million, of which about $2.5 million a year is in interest that's earned, and we can take about, or you can take about 5%, up to 5% of that amount, to do with whatever is specified in the wills and the trusts that have been given to the town of South Kingston. Now, there are strict rules with, with most of the entities in that portfolio, and as I said, the Neighborhood Guild makes up 90%, so the other eight portfolios are essentially minor portfolios. The one that is the largest, however, second largest I should say, is the one that goes to Stepping Stones. That's the Carolyn Hazard Fund, and that stands at about $1.5 million right now. So most, the interest, or whatever the 5% that we can take, goes to the Stepping Stones in support of the maintenance of that school. There are other funds that go towards the high school and other funds. There are, however, two, two or three funds that the committee has considered to be kind of moribund, because they don't earn much money, they're very, very small, and we can't do much with them. Two of them are scholarships, and the amount of scholarships that we give to the students that are recommended to us, we have no authority to say who should get the scholarship, that's done by the schools themselves, but when you look at the amount of money that goes to each of those individuals, $200 and $1,000 is not very much for going ahead with a, with some, a college education as such. We've talked, we've talked about this for a number of years now, we would like to increase that, but our, our hands are held behind our back with it, because of the restrictions that are put on this and, and the requirements that are put on the scholarships. Other than that, the one that's now in, in our sight, and has been discussed, just at the last meeting as a matter of fact, is there's one that goes to Wakefield School. Of course, Wakefield School doesn't exist anymore, but if you go back in the history of the, of that particular portfolio, the money was given to construct the original Wakefield School, and when the original Wakefield School, which is, was located up near the Mazda dealership, and was torn down eventually when the Wakefields, the present Wakefield School was built, the money that was in that portfolio was used to help with the building of that Wakefield School a number of years ago. Now, with no Wakefield School, the question is, where does the money go, and who has it? There doesn't seem to be many restrictions on that one, because it was given to build a school, and so we're now exploring the possibility with the solicitor on how to go forward with that. There are a number of restrictions associated with people who might be involved with the, with the wills and trusts that were associated with the giving of that principal amount of money, but who knows whether those people are still here with us, or whether they are even aware of what happened with their ancestors as such. We'll be looking at that in the future, along with some of the other portfolios that earn very, very small amounts of money as such. If you have any questions, consider that this committee is really working on your behalf and standing between you and the financial advisor and understanding what's going on. In the present economy, there's a lot going on, and we're trying to understand what's going on with that.
All right, thank you, William. Any questions for members? Go ahead.
So I, I appreciate you looking at trying to make better use of some of the funds that are small, or to reorganize them. I was just looking for an update from the solicitor about what, where that is, and what's the timeline.
So it's not an easy inquiry, because some of these deeds go back over 100 years.
Or more.
Or more, and some of the language is contradictory, et cetera. So the bottom line answer, we're trying to get an answer to them within the next 30 to 45 days. Some of them, it was a little easier to respond immediately, others not so, but I, I would hope by the beginning of December or so, we'll know where we're at. But no matter what, we're not talking big sums of money.
Oh, I know.
This is not gonna solve the bigger issue at all.
We, yeah, I know that, it's like, under 100, that, that one might be well, well under 100,000 that you're talking about.
Correct.
Right. I just was, I think it makes sense to think about if we could use it in some way for a school, we are building a school, so sometimes people need something.
Mike, just to get a clarification, you, you said deed. We're not, I assume we're not talking about a deed to the property of High Street?
No, not, no.
Deed of trust.
Deed of trust, right.
Okay, thanks.
There is a, a fund associated with the high school, yes. It's, I don't remember the amount that's there, but it's not gonna solve any of your problems, that's for sure.
No, but it just may streamline the work of that committee. I think even that high school fund was, I feel like it was under 10,000, it was not a lot of money.
Most of the funds are under 100,000 dollars. There, there are four, like I said, the Stepping Stones ones is, is 1.1 and 1/2 mil. There is no other fund that is over a million, and one of them I think is 800,000, and another one is slightly lower than that, but the Sewell Fund goes back to the 1600s.
The school fund?
No, the Sewell Fund.
Sewell, oh, okay.
It was, it was put in to start the Kingston Institute, which of course there isn't a Kingston Institute any longer, but it helped with this, there was a Kingston Elementary School there for a number of years. Actually, when I arrived in, in Kingston, there was a school there, it was a building. I don't know whether their school was running or not, but there was a building there.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rosen, I don't have any questions for you tonight, but I feel like at some point before the next budget, we'd like to have you come back in and point us in a direction of anything that the Town Council needs to straighten out or look at, because this was very enlightening, what your testimony tonight. Thank you for your service on the committee, and I'm looking forward to hearing a bit more from about your work in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, William. All right, next up we have Dorothy Hill looking to be reappointed to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Dorothy, welcome.
Thanks, hi. Yes, so I bought a bike in 2020, and I've been hooked, and I ride all over town on the roads, and I feel pretty safe, the drivers are pretty good, but I know that's not the case for everybody. It's not safe for young people to ride on the roads, it's not safe necessarily for people to, you know, for pedestrians. So I joined BPAC to try to make a difference in the community and see what I could do to help make things a little bit safer. In the last year, BPAC has written letters of support and attended meetings on Route 138 project that's coming up on Kingston Road, we came before you then, Rhode Island Transit riders, we've attended, or I've attended some of the meetings, and we've put, put out our thoughts on that, because how do people get to the bus stop? They have to walk, and we want to make sure that there's safe ways for them to do that. We've weighed in on affordable housing, because it's important that people that may not have cars be able to, to walk and get around town. So Wakefield School's great, it's right in town, South Road is a little bit different, and certainly out farther away from town, not as many options. And also the high school, we've, we've weighed in on how to make it safer for, for kids to walk to school, and, you know, talked about school road and church road and crossing Kingston Road. So those are some of the things that we've, we've looked at and weighed in on with, with letters and representation this year. And as you guys handle the big ticket items and, and some of the big projects in town, are, we're very narrowly focused on safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, so whenever something comes before you, we feel an obligation, well, it's our charter to, to weigh in and, and give you some recommendations on that. So we've just sent you a, a letter with three asks and a recommendation. As you know, you've just recently passed the pavement management program for, for DPS, and as you know, that just looks at the condition of the roadways curb to curb, and it does not address the condition of sidewalks, whether the roads are safe for pedestrians or bicyclists, and, you know, what can be done to make them safer, what can be done for traffic calming. And so one of the asks that we have is that there be a fund for, for an engineering study that would help the town identify what are the different mechanisms, engineering, that can be used for different, different streets, and to make it fair for, for folks that come before you and say, my people are driving too fast on my road. So we can't just address every street the same way. So we want to give DPS the, the money that they need in order to do these studies, we want them to have the money in order to have an engineer on call, that they can find out if there's, what they can do in a particular situation that comes before you, and then also to have funds for just really low-cost items. Sidewalks are big-ticket items, but maybe just a stretch of sidewalk, just to fill in a gap, or some signage, or some better striping, so.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Okay.
Any questions up here?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Dorothy. All right, last up we have Elle Moore looking to be appointed to the Historic District Commission. Elle, come on up. Elle, since this is a first-time appointment, we're just gonna ask you a, a different line of questioning here. First off, you know, tell us why you think you'd be a good fit, tell us a little bit about your background, if you've been following, you know, the committee meetings at all, maybe some of the challenges or successes on their plate as of recent and going forward, and anything else you wish to say, so go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm interested in joining the Historic District Commission, I've long been interested in volunteering my time anyway with the town. I currently work in the North Kingston Planning Department, and I'm the staff liaison for the Historic District Commission that oversees Wickford, as well as the Brown Street Design Guidelines Committee, which is, or it's Wickford Village Design Guidelines, so Brown Street is actually not in the Historic District, so at least we have a little oversight there. I've been doing this for about two years, I'm going on my third year there, so I have pretty good experience now with how to apply the National Park Services Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines, so that's kind of the guidebook for how to rehab or reconstruct historic structures. And I'm just very interested in historic buildings, which is kind of how I got that committee in the first place as a staff person. I don't super closely follow the South Kingston Historic District Commission, but I do, in my day-to-day work, will look at what other towns are doing, so I will look to South Kingston as an example. So the committee that I staff just, we've done some updates to our rules and regulations and given me some more administrative approval powers. So South Kingston was one of the communities that I looked at to see what we were doing here in this town. It's run very differently, so I'm also interested in learning more, and, you know, as my career develops, I would like to become a certified planner and maybe get more into the historic preservation side of things like, as a focus.
All right, thank you, Elle. Any questions?
Thank you for applying, and I, I can't believe you were just hidden in the community, and I think you're gonna be a great fit for that committee, I'm sure.
Yes, I, I second that very strongly. Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Elle.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, that's gonna move us to item five.
Mr. President, where there's one more interview, item D, Lisa Beth Sanford for reappointment to BPAC.
He doesn't wish to be reappointed. We almost missed you there.
That's okay. I was like, okay, I'm gonna skip out of this and we'll be fine. But I'm, I'm being reappointed to, I hope to be reappointed to BPAC. This would be my third appointment. I've been here through us trying to get green and complete streets ordinance, and now we're transitioning with Dorothy's help, and, and of course Ken, as our both fearless leaders. This is a great team. We are working on, as all the things that Dorothy said, plus wayfinding, and we're hoping to work on the escape plans and paths, and making it so it's easier and safer to get from each neighborhood to each other without necessarily, without hitting areas that are high vehicle traffic. That's one of my personal hopes. I also really love the fact that now we are working on procedures so that some of the, with our liaison, so that many of the treatments that we can use to make safer streets can be applied to all of the streets thoughtfully through the CIP plan and looking towards communicating with the neighbors, with the neighborhoods, to help it be a, a plan that works for all, and keep all the stakeholders in, in mind. Any questions?
Any questions?
I appreciate you guys, and thank you so much for allowing us to be here and having our, our voices.
Thank you. All right, we're now gonna move on to item five appointments. Do I hear a resolution?
I make a resolution. No, well, I think it's fine. I make a resolution to appoint Sam Grimley for reappointment to the Waterfront Advisory Commission, and make a resolution to William Rosen, reappointment for the trustees of the South Kingston School Funds, reappoint Dorothy Hill to the BPAC, reappoint Lisa Beth Sanford to the BPAC, and appoint Elle Moore to the Historic District Commission.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes. It's now going to bring us to item six, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve items six A through E.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes. It's now going to move us to item seven, licenses. A is a resolution granting vixheling and holiday sales licenses to Justin Fontaine Restaurants, LLC, doing business as Melgy's River Edge Cafe, Main Street, Wakefield. Application by Justin Fontaine. Justin, welcome.
Hello.
So tell us what's going on.
So I've been working at Melgy's, before it was Melgy's, it was just Rivers Edge, for 18 years. And then I had the opportunity this past June to purchase the business from the previous owner and just been working and trying to provide for the community. There's a lot of people that have been going there before I was even born, and it's nice to still see them every day and and just get to know their life daily and also be able to provide for the community as far as donations to various things. And yeah, that's about it.
All right. Continuing on with similar operations, focused toward breakfast?
Yep.
Nice. SK High, 2012?
That's right.
My man. SK High, 2011. Good to see you up here.
Good to see you.
And I understand you have a coffee place in the same building structure as well?
Yep. That's planning to be a thing also, yes.
Nice. All right. Any questions?
Motion to approve item seven A.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to say I stopped at Arabella's and it was delightful. So, great stuff. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes. Good luck. All right. It's going to move us to item B, a resolution granting vixheling and holiday sales licenses to PB PVD Soco LLC, doing business as Plyables RI, South County Commons Way, Wakefield. Application by Michael Walsh. Michael?
Yes?
Come on up.
How are you?
Good. Tell us what's going on.
So we are opening or getting ready to open our third pliable location in Rhode Island. We've got one in East Greenwich and one in Lincoln, so we're opening one in South County Commons hopefully this weekend.
Nice.
It's a acai bowl, fresh fruit smoothies, super fruit bowls, that type of product that we'll be bringing in there.
All right. What hours of operation, nighttime, daytime?
I believe our hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Nice. All right. It's going to be a nice hangout-type lounge in there?
Not really. It's more of a grab-and-go. We unfortunately got a small location in South County Commons, so it's going to be more, you know, we've got, I think, seating for like six people inside. So we'll have a few tables on the exterior of the place, but it's going to be more of a grab-and-go or delivery-type place.
So where are you located? Where's 36 South?
We are the old jewelry store right next door to Pokmoto or Poke Bowl Place.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you come, well, when you're driving down in, we're on the left-hand side in the first store of the second building.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm there all the time.
Motion to approve item seven B.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. That passes. Good luck.
Perfect. Well, come by and visit us.
We will. All right.
Thank you.
It's going to bring us to item C, a resolution granting vixheling and holiday sales licenses to Titan Venture Group LLC, doing business as Cafe 99, Forton Road, Kingston. Application by Owas Khan. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
So, yeah, similar thing. Tell us what's happening. This is in URI Emporium, I believe?
Yes, yes, yes. So it's a cafe and it combines, we are bringing experience from the different, it will be a different culture from different countries as well. So the whole, the seating arrangement, everything, the food, it's a combination of the American, Arabic, and Turkish food. There's a lot of coffees, like 15 different types of coffees and food from Turkey and everything. The seating arrangement is from a copy of Dubai. So we want to give the kids in the Emporium coming from the college, everything, the experience, a new experience. I mean, you know, we've been going around to the Emporium. We are, we see the same thing. There's nothing different. So there's a little bit change we want to bring to the Emporium. And also the prices we are keeping is very reasonable, so we can give it back to the community, help the students, because we were students at one point, so we know what the struggle is and everything. So just keeping it simple and a place where the students can come, use the Wi-Fi, do their homework, bring their friends, sit, talk. It's like, if I have to say, it's like a chilling vibe. You just sit and chill. There's nothing, just, you know, so it's a simple concept. And so if it's successful, we're going to move forward with that.
All right. When's opening day?
If you guys approve today, I'm going to open tomorrow.
Nice. Any questions?
And your, did you tell us your hours so that you?
Yes. So we are planning to have from 10 to 2:00, 2:00 AM, because most of the students, they're late-night studies. They want to come and sit, coffee, and everything. So it's like planning to have till 2:00 AM in the morning.
Where exactly is it in the Emporium?
It's on the right side of Simple Thai.
Okay. Yeah. It's a pretty big space.
It's beautiful now.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yes. I mean, so we're working hard on that, and I welcome you guys. Please come and take a look. The furnitures are beautiful.
We will.
So one thing I will tell you that will be very helpful, if you are open till 2:00 AM, if you could post the way that students can get transported back, because some students might feel uncomfortable leaving the Emporium at 2:00 AM, but there's a ride-share program that's at no cost. I would recommend reaching out to URI Parking Services so that you could post that up, so that way people would hang till 1:00, 1:32, and then safely get wherever they need to go back on the campus. There you go.
I'm speechless to how to thank you, but thank you so much. That's a very good, wonderful idea.
Yes, Parking Services.
Oh, there you go. Nice.
I mean, if Cafe 99 is as cool as you guys look tonight, I mean, you guys looking fresh.
Come on.
I'm just saying. It suits. It's very, very persuasive. So excited to stop in.
Motion to approve item seven C.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You guys in there?
I'll definitely stop by and drop some cards and everything, so please, please stop by.
Absolutely. Will do. Thank you. All right. It's now going to move us to item eight, public comments. We're trying something a little different tonight. We asked that if you have any comments that are related to items that are new business items, we ask you to come up now. Bob Trager, you can find a way. All right. So first come, first serve. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on new business items, I invite you to come on up. We just asked you to introduce yourself. We're going to limit you to five minutes. Bob, you got to hit the button on the right.
I happen to be in a fragile emotional state right now. Has nothing to do with this meeting, nothing to do with the town, nothing to do with the country. But I'm going to, I made a pledge to myself quite a few weeks ago. I've been coming to council meetings for years, Narragansett and South Kingston, for all different reasons. Well, something came up today, I'll just mention it quickly, that I listened and I was pleased to hear that public access is still something that someone is thinking about and trying to do something about. It's one of the reasons I got started in it 20 or 30 years ago. And parking, I'm glad it was brought up the way it was because it's the critical one, isn't it? If you have a boat and a trailer and you're going to put it in, and you've got no place to park your trailer, you've got no place to, anyway, you know the story. Everybody, we're all, this is an intelligent group here, so. I'll just say a couple of words about what I've been listening to, the government shutdown. I would, I am so pleased that I'm not experiencing that when I'm here, because you're, this is a government moving. It's one of the reasons I come. I want to hear it. I want to see it. I want to believe it. And I do believe it. But my assessment of the last week or so tells me that we are, the hole is deeper that we're getting into in this country. People 10,000 times smarter than me see it clearly. I'm just a, an unread locust pumpkin that had a business for 43 years, and that's what I did. But I managed to squeeze in a few meetings over here, too, because in my heart, I feel there's a dangerous, a dangerous, ooh, I can't even think of the word I want to use. I was thinking of smell, but in the air, there's a, there's stuff in the air right now that is so obvious in my mind that I, I find it hard to believe there isn't more outrage than even the great demonstrations that did occur in the country and the world. But we can't, we have to stop this. It has to be stopped. I don't know how it's going to happen. And on that note, I'm going to be a little disrespectful tonight, and I'm going to leave because I'm not feeling that great. But I have to do this, and I'll try to figure out what you were talking about on responding to the new business. Next time, I'll come up with something, I'm sure. Try to, but I think the public access, if that is still in the driving mode here, I really believe that the little that we have left, I always think of Dave Giacubulus, the ex-state trooper who died quite a few years ago now. Him and I used to sit down in Jerusalem and talk and whatever. And he told me many years ago, well, when I go down to Florida, and if they see a piece of property, and they find out that it's owned by the town or the state, they immediately go in, fix it up, clean it up, and put some parking places in.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
Be well, Bob. We'll be all thinking about you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on new business items? I invite you to come on up. All right. We're going to move on now to new business items. We're going to go to item nine. Wendy, come on up. Nine A.
Good evening. Wendy, you are a town assessor. New business item nine A is an abatement request number 653 in the amount of $25,572.71, which consists of one elderly late filer, nine assessor appeals, and two board decisions.
All right. Any questions for Wendy on this?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
That's okay. So a couple of years ago, when you said the elderly late filer, we set up like a way for if you had missed a payment in five years, you could get that late fee waived. Is that, this?
No, this is, the deadline to file is May 15th to get it on the bill. But a lot of the times, there's all sorts of different issues as to why someone would want to file late. So to my knowledge, I mean, since I've been here for the last five and a half years, they're permitted to file late, and then we still award them the exemption, and then we abate it.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. So they just filed not timely. I can word that differently if you don't like the way it's worded.
Oh, no, no. I just was basically saying it out loud for people who, it's very painful when you miss the first quarterly payment, because the interest rate is a huge pinch as opposed to?
I see what you mean. I'd have to talk to the tax collector, but I don't think we waive the fee per, it's embedded in. I know we have a grace period for up to 30 days, but past that, I'm, it's outside of the window, to my knowledge. I don't believe there's a fee associated necessarily with that.
Jim, do you remember? Sorry.
Yes. This was a result of, it was a couple of years ago now, where elderly woman came in, and first time she had missed her payment on her taxes, and the town council approved a new policy where if, I believe if it's your first time, only time in three years, I believe it was, then we would waive everything. You would get one bite at the apple every three years, I think it was. That's a policy with the tax collector.
Yeah. You'll have to forgive me.
Wendy's the tax assessor.
I make you in charge of everything, tax everything. Sorry.
Yeah. I have to say, per statute, South Kingston has a town assessor, and we really try to make it that, because tax assessor and tax collector, it gets really convoluted, but they're completely separate. We work together every day, though. She's very lovely.
So I've had conversations with Wendy about these. You're going to see many of these at each meeting now, because now the board, the assessment board of review is coming with their decisions. So that's what you're seeing in front of you.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the list here. Okay. Thank you. Good to know.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Motion to approve item nine A.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. That passes. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Chief Morninghan, come on up. Item B is just a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise an order of notice for a public hearing. If you just want to give a quick brief on what it is to come as to that public hearing, go ahead, chief.
Yes. Good evening, Matt Morninghan, Chief of Police. So these are part of our accreditation. So these are standing orders that we had to make changes of as, during our accreditation period. I instituted special orders at the time that would get us to the point where the orders went out to the rank and file, where compliance has to happen. But now we have to make him, special orders are only a temporary change. So we'll need to now make these as permanent changes. Since they're standing orders, we have to come before you and notice this. They, you know, going through each one, they really center around training. So training when an officer first comes on, and then additional annual training in the way we go about documenting in those specific areas.
Go ahead.
So just, the last time this came through, we talked, and Mike, we talked about trying to change this so that the chief has a little bit more flexibility or efficiency. Where are we at?
It's in the charter. So we have to wait for next election where we can change that.
Okay. So in this, so I'm just, so in the spring, do we vote on an item? And then, like, should we have a town council business item that then we?
Right. What we'll do is, only you as a council can propose a charter amendment, and prior to the next election, we'll make sure that's all teed up.
Okay.
If it were by ordinance, you could change it, but it's by charter.
So one of us has to just submit an agenda item that we direct the staff?
The chief and I, we'll make sure that happens.
Oh, so we don't have to do that?
I will make sure it gets before you in a timely manner, so that prior to the election, it gets submitted to the Secretary of State, so that we can have the electorate vote on it.
And you'll draft the appropriate language for the charter?
So this may be redundant. So there's nothing that we as a council need to vote on, it's just going, right now, we don't need to send the work to you? You already know you're going to give us the work back?
Yeah. We, the chief and I and the manager have spoken many times about this. This has been an ongoing issue with chiefs of police for a long time. We have a chief of police who says, "Let's go forward. We're changing it now."
Might as well do it. Make it, make it easier.
We're the only municipality in the state that has this, where, and as you know, and have come before you many times, especially with accreditation standards, there are times in time when we need to change what we're doing to improve what we're doing. And I think from my office, I need that flexibility to make the changes on behalf of the department.
I just wanted to bring it up so that we didn't forget it, because it's one year until Election Day, pretty much.
And the council's already discussed and expressed its ascent in moving toward that direction.
Right. And you will eventually have to approve a question in ballot language and all of that. But we'll make sure that gets to you in a timely manner in 2026.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, chief.
Motion to approve item nine A? Nine B, sorry.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. That passes. Thank you, chief. We've got you. Item C here as well.
Yes. So I came before you on October 6, and you had approved a resolution for us changing our contract in hiring two of our clinicians, existing clinicians, from our CIT mental health program, which is funded through federal grant funding. Before, it was a program that specifically was contracted out with the Providence Center. Before it was a program that specifically was contracted out with the Providence Center. These two clinicians worked for the Providence Center. Because of some changes with the Providence Center, we shifted and now we're contracted directly with them. Since the resolution was passed, and I know it was only a few weeks ago, one of the clinicians went to file for an LLC, which wasn't required at the time. She since doesn't want the LLC, the company, to be in her married name, she's in the process of, of a divorce, so she'd like to go back to her maiden name. So as a result, we're asking for a revision to the earlier resolution and it would be now approving her in her business under her maiden name.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve item nine C.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
It's going to move us to item D.
Good evening, Craig Stanley, Chief of EMS. Before us, we have as a, in this memo, we, in recent years, with the staffing shortages, we've hired EMTs and cardiac level personnel with the goal of eventually them becoming paramedics. So we have, we are in the process of doing that. And this memo here for exclusive for two schools that are accredited. And that's really important in paramedic school, that the school is accredited through a very extensive review. So we have, at the end of the school, we have a quality paramedic that has gone through rigorous training and we can validate that. So this allows us, as we progress, to pay for the schools throughout, throughout their, their term.
All right, thank you, Chief Stanley. Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I have your memo printed, but I was just curious, did, did you just say when I was looking for this, where the funding for that sixteen thousand comes from?
Yeah, it's in our educational, it's already been budgeted in my education account with the department, yep.
So, when, when people, like, in the private sector, you get your MBA or you get a, you take graduate classes, you, you know, have a certain years of service that once you get that degree, you owe back? Is there some sort of, I'm guessing there's some sort of a clause, because we wouldn't want to pay for someone to become a paramedic at eight or nine thousand dollars and then then bid into some other community? So how do we, what's the service attached to the?
Yeah, we, we don't have any current service for that, and I think we, we discussed that along, kind of same with the police department, is, is not having that and it's, hopefully they, they don't leave, but chances are they could. And we don't have, we don't have anything in place for that right now.
So, we give someone eight thousand dollars worth of training, because there's only three people, I'm sorry, I'm doing the bad math, it's like six thousand dollars for training, and then they can just?
They can, so we, the police department, police departments across Rhode Island have had this issue.
Yeah.
Where they get trained, whether it's municipal academy, in-service training, whatever, any certifications, and they can leave. And there used to be a provision that we would try and recruit, you know, within, I think it was a five-year period of them leaving to get money back for going to the academy or training or whatever. But we've since found out from a labor attorney, we can't do that, and it's not, it's not acceptable practice. So I'm assuming it would easily be the same thing for EMS personnel. There is always the gamble that they go get training and then they leave. That's, that's the way, that's a common occurrence in the state. There's no way of, of preventing that.
So is this a pilot program?
Yeah, this, well, this is the, the first time since in my tenure that we've hired EMTs and cardiacs, and now we're, we're sending them to paramedic school due to the shortage of finding paramedics.
Okay, so, and you've already selected the three staff?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so they already know they're going and?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Correct, any other questions?
Motion to approve item seven D, sorry, nine D.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes, thank you, Chief Stanley. It's going to move us to item E. We're going to go to you, Mike Orsillo, on this.
We discussed it, the last meeting, the amount that is set forth in your rules and regulations for placing town purchases on the consent agenda, it's been ten thousand dollars for a long, long decades. And so it was the administration's recommendation that the council consider raising that amount to twenty-five thousand, so if the purchases are under twenty-five, twenty-five or under, it could go on the consent agenda. Needless to say, like any consent agenda item, if anyone from the council or the public had a question, you can always remove it, but it's just to, ten thousand is quite low unfortunately in this day and age. So the recommendation is that you move to amend your rules of conduct by changing the amount from purchases from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand for consent agenda consideration.
All right, thank you, Mike. So it appears from what's on the agenda and from what you're saying, that we do not need to have a public hearing, there is not an ordinance for this, this is just in, I guess, the council rules and procedures?
It's, it's your rules of conduct and you are able to amend them simply by putting them on the agenda.
Okay.
So, okay, so I just was curious if we could add just a tiny piece of language that it would be if they were budgeted, right? So it's not a new purchase, it's something that, you know, they'll say like, Rich will say, this is the salt we need to purchase, or this backhoe, it's already a budget item versus a new purchase, like a new item, software item.
Well, one of, one of the things that we've been doing, even with the regular new business items, is there's usually a memo attached that identifies the funding source. It seems to me that'd be sufficient.
This was one of the revisions I requested, and the reason was, there are many things that we purchased that if you compare it to seventeen years ago, when we had the ten thousand dollar limit initially imposed, it, it's far surpassed that. Most of the stuff in my mind that I'm thinking of is the stuff like on public services, like salt, chemicals, stuff that would, we have to purchase no matter, you know, if it was fourteen thousand dollars, why should it come to the council? We have to purchase it anyway. If there's any doubt in my mind, and I have put stuff that's been under the threshold in front of the council, if I think it's something the council should be made aware of or wants to weigh in on, I've done it several times. So I assure you that, if there's anything that I see that is a purchase of like, software and stuff like that, that I think the council should be aware of, I'll put it on the agenda. So, I'll, it won't be on consent, I'll, I'll bring it to the attention of the council, even though it's, it could be under twenty-five thousand. Doesn't happen often, but I see what you're saying, but you can take anything off that consent agenda and put it as, as, add it to the agenda as a new business item if you'd like.
Does that require a majority vote, or can anyone pull it off and do they have to agree?
Yeah, your tradition has been anyone can pull it off, there's never been a requirement. And, and I don't know of any council that requires a majority vote. Any one individual on the council can pull it off.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just feel like if it's, I just want to, non, non-budgeted items should come before the council. I mean, obviously if they're under ten?
Yeah, that, that's a rare occurrence, but we'll, we will, it'll, I always err on the side of caution. If it should go before the council, it'll be before the council. But also, you can pull, you can pull it off, anyone can pull it off.
I know, I know.
If you're not comfortable with it.
I got a few questions here. So, Mike, just based on how I read this, anything in excess of ten but less than twenty-five would be required to be on the consent agenda? So the way we're operating now is, if it's more than ten, it's required to be on the consent agenda? Or, sorry, it's required to be on the agenda?
Regular.
To be acted on by the council. If it's under ten, the manager has the authority to act on it without council approval?
Not, not true.
Okay.
It, it gets put on the consent, we're just trying to make the meeting more efficient. If it's one dollar, it comes before you, because only the council can approve the, the expenditures, it's just put on the consent agenda so that you don't have to bring someone up and debate it. That's the only change. Instead of being ten thousand and less, it would be twenty-five thousand and less on the consent agenda. But you will always see it listed.
So the manager does not have authority to approve expenditures of money without council approval?
That is, under ten.
There must be certain items.
Under ten, I think he can.
Under ten thousand, yes. Under ten thousand, like if it's a seven thousand dollar item.
All right, so I'm going to ask that question again. The manager has the authority to approve expenditures of money that are less than ten thousand dollars?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the way we've been operating is anything in excess of, of that has been required to be put on an agenda?
The regular agenda.
Requires action by the council.
Right.
Now we're considering increasing that amount to twenty-five, but based on what's written here, it's anything in excess of ten but less than twenty-five, we're going to consent agenda. So it would still require town council authority, just placed in a spot to allow for that to move more efficiently as opposed to taking up the item individually?
Yes, that's where, it, it would go on a consent agenda, so if it was fourteen thousand dollars, use that as an example to purchase salt for DPS, whereas that would normally go under a new business item, under the existing rules, now we'll go on the consent agenda. Over ten but less than twenty-five.
Now as far as pulling items off the agenda, we've always operated that, you know, if you have a majority, you can pull an item off an agenda, but we've never gone against anyone trying to pull an item off an agenda. So I just want to be clear, is that open for interpretation or is that what it says in the rules here?
No, 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 I want to be very clear, any counselor always has the right all by themselves without a majority vote to pull something from the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's always been, as long as I've been sitting here, it's a long time, that's been your policy. And to my knowledge, the many other municipalities I'm exposed to, it's the same way. A counselor without a vote has the right to pull something off the consent agenda.
And the way to do that is during the meeting, prior to consent agenda being acted on, a member of the council at a meeting says, I'd like to pull off item XYZ?
Absolutely, that easy, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
These seem like good suggest, or good changes, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to pass item nine E.
So I just, before you second, or whatever, I did, I was going to just, are you comfortable with the twenty-five? Do you want to go less than that and see how it works, or do you just want to? It's a big jump, I'm just saying it's twice, more than twice what it was.
So I'll say my opinion because I made the motion. I think that because this council has added the tradition of any counselor being able to pull something off the consent agenda, then that is a good enough way to make sure that all of our, our questions and concerns about items that go up to twenty-five thousand are addressed. And I think that, that's my opinion, and that's why I made the motion, and I think that, or, it says, or a member of the public so requests. So it's not just us, but a member of the public during public comment on new business items can pull it off, and or address us to pull it off. I think these are enough constraints that gave us enough authority to do that.
But the sequence, the sequence doesn't allow the member of the public to pull it off because the consent agenda is before public comment?
With all due respect, you're both wrong. The way the rule is written, it says a member of the public so requests, but it doesn't say during public comment. It would have to be before the meeting or before the consent agenda is heard. Makes sense, because it's, it wouldn't be part of new business.
The way, the way this generally works is that if someone in the public wanted a consent agenda, when you get to that item, they're going to stand up or say something because the rule clearly says either one of you or someone from the public.
And the simplest thing would be for them to contact a member of the council and say,
Ahead of time.
I'd like to understand what this is.
All right, I got a question, Mike, this.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I made a motion.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? I have a few questions I want to ask the solicitor here, just in terms of, you know, how a member of the public could request that a consent agenda item could be removed from the consent agenda such that it could be discussed?
So when you get to item, in tonight's agenda, when you call for item six, consent agenda, you usually always say as part of that, you know, you're looking for a motion or does anyone want to take anything off? That would be the time that someone from the public would stand up and say, I would request the council remove such and such an item. I, I don't think it's ever happened, but.
That's exactly. That would be, that's a rare, rare, I've, I've been here three and a half years, it hasn't happened yet. And maybe three or four, five items have been taken from new business, from consent and put on new business in that three and a half year period. There's checks and balances in place for this. Once again, the council's going to see everything we're purchasing. And what the solicitor was talking about, does happen under ten thousand, but it goes to Munis, that stuff that I purchased, hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, the smaller stuff. That's not what this is about, this is to raise, and it mostly is for the public services stuff. The stuff that we need to buy, like going to a grocery store, salt, chemicals, chlorine, stuff that we just have to purchase in that quantity.
Right. We, we hear a lot about these things that we need to purchase, like everyday chemicals, things like the muffin munchers for the, you know?
That's a machine, so that's over twenty-five, I'm sure.
Right, but, well, be that as it may, the point is, we, we do hear about a lot of stuff that we don't know what the going rate is for a muffin muncher, for instance.
Why don't we go with Riff Raff?
Right, or the Riff Raff.
And as, as Jim pointed out, you're always going to receive those backup memos as part of your package. So ahead of the meeting, you're going to be able to read it and say, hey, in this case, let's get some more public participation. So you always have that right. See, again, it's towards efficiency. Ten thousand is extremely low, unfortunately, in the world in which we live in.
And, Mike, this language allows the manager some discretion here in that if something is in between those amounts, but the manager believes it's something that the council will be interested in discussing and sort of already anticipating it would be pulled off, he can do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And he said he would.
That, that I have done, not many times, but I have. There was some contract we were doing, something with the police department about a year ago, and it was like ninety-seven hundred. I just didn't, I wanted the council to see it, to weigh in. So I put it on as new business, not as a consent agenda item.
Okay. Any more questions? We're still in discussion here? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. All right, we're now going to move to item F, discussion and potential action relative to a proposed pre-development work plan at the South Road School property, Wakefield Elementary School property, and the Oliver Watson property as requested by council member Patty Alley. Patty, go ahead. We got Luke Murray, front row, we got Jim Manny, and we also got Jamie Rabbit up front.
So, um, this, this is referring, is your mic still on? Okay, oh, now it is, all right. So, this is referring to a memo that the council received on October sixth from Luke, and it, it's regarding a res, a request for a resolution to authorize all or a portion of a proposed work plan. These are all, this is all regarding the three town properties, which of course are South Road, Oliver Watson, and Wakefield Elementary School. This is a very thorough five-page presentation, sort of revisiting all of the things that we've done over the past couple of years now, dating back to August of twenty-twenty-four. Actually, it's just been a little over a year, but in that time, we've had eight meetings. And also, those were public meetings and also received a lot of feedback from various boards and commissions with recommendations. And so, from those recommendations, has, was presented to us a very thorough work plan and, and ideas for what, what we ought to sort of do first on these properties. So, I would like to discuss and vote on the things that were given to us by, by, in this report. So the first one would be to demolish the existing South Road Elementary School building. This building has been vacant, as we all know, since two thousand and seven, so that's almost twenty years that we've been sort of maintaining this building. It has been used a couple of times, but it really has deteriorated. It has been used a couple of times, but it really has deteriorated to the point where there's not much we can do with it. And if we want to proceed forward with our, our stated goals of increasing affordable and workforce housing, the very first thing we need to do is to prepare the site. I believe this would, you know, show that we have some skin in the game when we're trying to get funding from the state. We all know that there are some funds available currently, and I think it's important that we sort of strike while the iron is hot. As far as the Oliver Watson property, I really like the suggestion that we sell the, the large home and then we could put that money towards developing. The only thing that I don't like in here is that it specifically mentions affordable and workforce housing, whereas I would prefer that it be affordable and elderly housing so that we could stay in line with the wishes of the original grantor of the property to us. So if we were to get, you know, say seven hundred thousand for the, for the large home, and then we have, you know, a hundred or two hundred thousand in that other Oliver Watson fund together, that could be almost a million dollars. And that would really be beneficial in getting some housing there for the elderly. And finally, with, with Wakefield Elementary, that, the school has just become a real target for vandalism. We have sixty broken windows. We have a lot of water damage. I, I believe that it would be better for us to, to demolish the school. I do, I did like the idea of the, the business incubator. However, the building needs a ton of work, and I just don't see us being able to feasibly do that now. So I just sort of wanted to discuss this and see if we could come to some agreement on how to move forward with this.
Jim, go ahead.
So this memo was given to you in a hard copy and by email about October sixth, and I wanted the town council to digest it because there are some three major decisions that you would have to make on these. I'll just give you the perspective that I, I'm looking at, that I'd like you to consider. So there are pros and cons to us paying to have the, the South Road School demolished. We'd be paying. We have the funds, but we'd be paying out of the town's money. And that is a concern. Couple of council members who have read this memo said, well, could we get money from the state to do it? And talking to Jamie Rabbit, the planning director, and Luke, who've both been working on this, that is a valid concern. So what my, and I know it's a concern of several of you, why are we spending taxpayer money when we might be able to get money from the state? We have not got any yet. Most of the money predominantly is going up north for housing projects, the money the state has. If that is a concern of you, we could give it a timeframe, say six months, and we put the hard press on to the governor and the speaker to say, this is what we're interested in. We would like funds to demolish that school, South Road School. If it goes farther than six months, or once all this bond money is gone, and then it's not gonna be replenished before an election, then you can say yes or no at that point. I would give it a timeframe, but not long because we could still be talking about this two to five years from now if we keep waiting, hoping that we get money to demolish the school. That's one. Let's talk about the Wakefield School. I've seen that school deteriorate in the past year more so than at any other time. There's tremendous graffiti, if you look at it from the back end of where the bike path is. It looks like in inner city, something you'd see in the Bronx. There's that much graffiti. We're up, we're, we're in the fifty to sixty window breakage range right now. We're cutting the shrubs down because kids are crawling onto the roof and getting into the building. They flooded the building. It's only a matter of time before someone gets hurt in there. And it is becoming a blight to Wakefield. Looking at all the boarded windows and the graffiti. But I also understand that there have been some discussion on repurposing that property. So I think that would be the decision. Do we want to move forward repurposing or do you want to take it down? Because it is becoming a public safety issue. Then the Oliver Watson House, that was self-explanatory. That is a decision I'm hoping the council can give us some direction on in the near future.
Thank you, Jim. Go ahead.
So I think I'd like to maybe suggest that we talk one project at a time. And so I think the simplest one in some ways might be Oliver Watson. And I think I absolutely agree with you, Patty. We gotta work to parcel off the house. I don't think it's gonna get seven hundred, but I love your optimism. So I'll, right, I'll go with that. And I also think you're right, there's several funds in the town that are for the care and elderly and in that smaller development. I think it makes sense to sort of make it for affordable elderly housing, whatever that.
All right, with that in mind, Luke Maury, can you come on up?
So I think that makes sense. And then I think I agree with, so, I think we both, regardless of what happens at Wakefield, I think taking the building down makes sense. There's so much misinformation. I believe that people want to keep the park and all of that, but there was actually community members who believed that there's gonna be so many new children we're gonna reopen that school, and that school's not reopenable based on the condition, right? So we, even if, even if we had this huge influx of hundreds of kids, it would be hundreds of kids. We would need, they would not be able to go to that school. It's, there's, there were all those facility issues always identified by the school department. If you were involved for the last ten years, you've heard about them. So I would want to knock that down, and I think that we, and, and that kind of makes sense. Like, if you think about the funding source being the towns, right? Because regardless of what happens, either we're gonna invest and it's gonna become a park or we're gonna invest and then maybe we'll have housing options. But either way, it makes, it's a wise use of the money. And then I think you gotta go back to South Road. And I kind of like what Jim's saying, is like pursue as much as we can and then make a decision and do it again. I think that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mike. I don't know how you got, oh, okay.
So I just wanted to thank council member Alley for bringing this forward. I think that we have had these abandoned public properties for almost twenty years, and it is time for us to do the due diligence. And, you know, Luke and Jamie, this memorandum leads us forward into a place that we're putting together foundational steps that can allow us to get to the next step, those RFPs, using the plans that Union Studios and Peregrine Group gave us so we can have a, a plan going forward. And the reason we're doing this is because South Kingstown needs affordable housing and workforce housing so our seniors and our working families can stay here. And I do love that raising the Wakefield Elementary School structure and using it in the meantime for more, extended Saga Tucket Park is going to allow us to make sure the public knows that at no point in this are we getting rid of Saga Tucket Park, right? I agree with Councilwoman Bergner, who has said that there has been a lot of misinformation out there. And at no point are we getting rid of Saga Tucket Park. I think that doing it this way is a great way of doing it, moving us forward. And I think that with this memorandum, we have a good plan to move forward and really pitch the public investment to our state leaders so we can get this money. Like Councilwoman Alley said, we're gonna put our skin in the game. We're gonna be the council that moves forward with these properties and bring trust back to this process because I'm very excited to see what we can do here. And I think that we should move forward with it. Counselors.
With respect to Oliver Watson, I, I think we're ready to go. The, the idea of selling off the parcel of the one house in order to create a fund makes sense. I, I agree with Patty's point about having that property focused, the development focused on elderly. And it's not just that it's convenient or that it's a good idea. I think it's consistent with the consent decree that this town entered into twenty-some-odd years ago over that original trust. On the funding part of the memo, I do have a couple of questions. Are there funds that we have on hand that are specifically related to Oliver Watson?
Yes.
So we believe we do, but I don't know if that's, it's more for the senior center, correct? It's not, it wouldn't be for this site?
No, isn't the Walter Wilson, Walter?
There you go.
There are funds associated with the Oliver Watson House that are, were designated for the purpose of elderly services.
And approximately how much is that?
Just over two hundred thousand, between two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty, I believe.
That's, that's what I recall, but that's not in the memo itself. You're not looking at those funds?
Yeah, no, because it's not eligible to be used for this type of purpose. That's really designated for elderly supports. So it's not something that we could allocate to this type of venture. What I identified was the tax, the real estate conveyance tax primarily.
What we use the fund for now is related to the senior center?
If memory serves me right, and Terry's here, can speak to this, but it's for, I think we've spoken before about this, those are experiencing difficulties, correct? Or is that the one? That's Walter Watson, I'm apologizing. I should just bring you up, Terry. You can, can you speak to this one?
But what's this?
Good evening. Yes, the Oliver Watson Fund gets, a portion of it gets authorized every year by the town council to help offset the senior services budget. So it is used in the budgeting process annually. A small amount, ten thousand dollars, generally speaking, year to year, gets authorized for the operating budget of the senior services. But that is, to Councilwoman Bergner's point, that's the Oliver Watson Fund. The Walter Watson Fund is the fund that is related to those in need in the community that may have a one-time need for utilities or that type of thing. There's a distinction.
The idea, if I understand it, is essentially spending off the interest and not invading the principle of that fund for senior services, but not specifically for Oliver Watson. And I'm not challenging or contesting that prioritization. I just wanted to make sure I understood the financing of the one point four million. The second part of it is you've identified two, not you, Terry, but Luke. You've identified two hundred thousand as existing South Road School funds. Can you define that a little better?
Yeah, so we have approximately three hundred thousand dollars allocated still in an account for the South Road School when it closed down. That was held in an account. So we use that every year towards the maintenance costs for that. Given that it's a substantial amount, we're holding a buffer as we kind of endeavor to potentially knock this building down. But that money could be used, and I've talked to Brian about this, for that raising of the facility.
What, what was the source of the three hundred thousand originally?
I believe, and again, I can refer to Brian. My understanding is when the school building was turned over, that was what came with it.
It came from the school?
And that, a lot of these are legacy funds, when these schools were built or there was bonds floated, that, that sat in account. And then when schools got turned over, they went with the building.
That's correct, but just to add to that also, I believe the facility, since it's been closed and in the possession of the town, it's been rented out several times, and the revenue associated with that is also in that fund.
So it's, it's an accumulation? Okay. Given those explanations for this funding sources, and again, back to what Patty said about not being totally sure about Wakefield Elementary School, I think the plan is a good one with respect to South Road School and Oliver Watson. I think, given that we did an application for state grant money and didn't get it this time, your idea, Jim, of having sort of a trigger a certain period of time makes sense. There was also the announcement from Rhode Island Housing and the governor's office of, I want to say, a hundred and twenty million in grant funds becoming available?
No.
No?
Jamie's doing something.
It was multi-tiered, so it was different tranches, different purposes. Some we qualify, some we would not. So we're still analyzing that and do intend to put in grants for it? Jamie and I spoke about that today.
I had a meeting that included Peter, and I always forget his last name, from Rhode Island Housing last week, and he mentioned that part of the grant money was gonna be available for infrastructure related to housing specifically from municipalities. So we, we can take another shot, but if not, we can do this work too.
So I will personally contact the governor and tell him what the intention is, if it's the intention of the council to tear down that school and use it for housing, that we need this money in this round of allocation. And if we don't get it, then we'll bring it back to you, and you can decide if you want to use these funds that have been designated in this report to tear it down.
Go ahead, I got a few questions, so go ahead.
Okay. Can we just go into a little bit more detail about the funding sources? I wanted, I'm kind of staying in this line for a second. So it's a last page?
Could we start one at a time? Maybe we could start with Oliver Watson, sort of get in depth there, allow us to potentially get consensus, and then move on to another property.
Do you, you're, you're not gonna go with the funding?
No, no, to include funding.
Oh, well, that wasn't when I asked, but.
You want to start with another property?
No, I just wanted to go through the table.
Oh, you want to go through the table? All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I hear what you're saying, but first I want to understand how he comes up with the amounts. And I just, I had a couple of questions, so.
Sure. So as you know, the real estate conveyance tax is the primary driver of what goes into the accounts. Previously, that, going back a couple of years, that was split. And along the way, over the past decade, it's been split in different ways, right? Originally it was a little more open space, then affordable housing came up. Then the last was, it was fifty, fifty percent affordable housing, approximately fifty percent open space. There's another fund I'll discuss tonight's was the Village Infrastructure Fund, which was very, very minute, out of that account. As the council knows, you, you suspended the funding for open space and moved everything moving forward, I think as of a year ago, into the Affordable Housing Fund. So that's grown significantly since that time because all of the real estate conveyances is being now funneled into that. But before that was suspended, there was already approximately one point four million in the open space account. Because we're not really acquiring open space in this town much anymore, that, that sums have been sitting for some time. Traditionally, it was to leverage grants or things for the land trust or, or town purchases. But realizing that we're potentially sufficient, I don't know, you know, the council, unless you've identified spaces to buy, we could reallocate those funds towards the current priority, which is affordable housing and site prep. I would argue that Wakefield School coming down is kind of a use of open space, at least in the interim. So the council can reallocate those funds however they wish. It is a real estate conveyance tax, and I've spoken to Brian about that. Obviously, the, the South Road Fund is self-explanatory. That would go towards raising the school and, and site, anything related to the site. We'd still use, if we have a hundred thousand left over, that could be used for additional site infrastructure, design, et cetera.
Okay, great. I'm glad that you, that's exactly what you, I wanted you to explain. It used to be a fifty-fifty, you know, it used to be fifty-fifty, and then we put a pause on open space, and we're just funding the affordable housing aspect. I just, for my, I'm just gonna say this now. I don't feel comfortable taking money out of open space, that one point four million. And I would, because that's what he's, he's recommending, he's taking seven fifty from the, that. My feeling would be to do the other projects. The, or the sequence would be just, I would not, I would bar that, take that money out last. I would spend the first seven hundred thousand, maybe we have that in the, in the couple, in the other two line items because I feel like then you're really shifting priorities. And I do think it makes sense, if Wakefield is ending up going last, what we need to do, then it maybe makes sense to do the open space funding there. But I just, I don't want to raid that open space fund. We might need that. There's other things we need to bring up. You know, there's Marina Park, there's Town Farm Park, there's things that, they're not for a new acquisition, but they're for the development and maintenance of.
I got a few questions, I kind of want to follow up on that. So Luke, we're talking about funds, like an affordable housing fund. So the real estate conveyance tax, monies that we've received that have been allocated to this affordable housing fund, and then monies from the real estate conveyance tax that have been allocated to open space acquisition fund. to open space acquisition fund. So, when we say we're going to use monies from the open space acquisition fund, does that mean the monies that we use from that fund are like limited in its use, such that we're making like a, sort of, an argument that by knocking down a building is for open space?
So, no, you don't have to make an argument. So, it was a policy of the council on to deposit these funds for that purpose in the first place, and that policy can be undone by the council for a different purpose. Priority shift. Former councils were more open space focused, because at the time, and I believe this goes significantly back in time, we didn't have as much acquired open space. That was used to leverage grants and open space acquisition. Priority shift.
Let me ask you this question, to follow up on that. So let's say we weren't sure at this time whether we wanted to commit to whether the Wakefield School property was to go down or out of affordable housing. Like, we weren't sure if we wanted to keep it a park, or make it a bigger park, or make it, you know, keep the park and then housing. We could potentially take the amounts in the open space acquisition fund, take a vote by the council and say, X amount can be used for any purpose that the council wishes to use, such that there's no restriction related to those monies, and we could use it any way we wish. And the reason I'm asking the question is, I don't want to take real estate, sorry, open space acquisition monies reallocated to housing, and then by using monies toward that for Wakefield, now we've committed ourselves, if we're not ready to commit to that. Does that make sense?
And that is essentially what is before you, or would be before you, yes. Right now, those, those funds are housed within the open space fund. The council would have the ability to transfer those funds, in essence, to affordable housing.
But could we transfer them to any other fund that would allow us the greatest flexibility possible?
The, the greatest flexibility possible would be the undesignated fund balanced. That, that is undesignedated and-
So that's a possibility?
If you so choose. That would, that would be, those are completely unencumbered and not associated with any restrictions.
Go ahead.
Let me, I, I think I understand the point Rory's trying to make, and it might be better to rephrase the question to Mike just a bit. Because we have had this fund designated for open space, I understand the response to be, it's a policy decision of the council, and the fact that a prior council designated it for open space doesn't mean that this council can't change-
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
But the way we would change it to give us the greatest flexibility would be to allocate it to the undesignated fund balance? Because if we just allocated it to the housing fund, now we're limited to using it for housing.
Unless you changed it yet again.
Yeah, you can do anything, so lack of better terms, it's the council's money. You can do whatever you would like to allocate it to, and you can shift that over time. What we're recommending is simply, since you're moving in the direction of affordable housing, and because the purpose of demoing that building is for an affordable housing purpose at this time, you can move it in that fund. Does, does not restrict you to affordable housing development, it does not restrict you to open space. It, it, it's simply a tag for a fund that we carry, if that makes sense. So it doesn't, if you want to put it in designated, the thing is, to get it out of undecided, you have to put it in a fund to be able to spend it. It can't just be in a drop fund.
So I just, I want to ask this too. So let's say we allocated a portion of the affordable housing fund, then we took monies out of that toward demolition. And let's say one of those properties did not become affordable housing. Is that a potential issue, or no?
No.
Okay. Understood.
So there's no, so, so, I just don't, I hear what you're saying, I just think it looks, the community believes and values open space. I think we all probably agree with that, right? That's a universal thing. People love the rural character, right? And we hear from many people, the potential buildup for this town becoming more dense, more, more housing, everything gets an ADU, da-da-da, 20 units, blah, blah, blah. And we might want to have that in case we want, in case there is something that we want to buy, we have identified something, or the land trust is able to identify something. So, I would want, want to pursue all other options before we went and took the 750,000 out of that. That's my philosophical position, based on living here and thinking about things. I would want to have more flexibility and spend in the other areas, spend the other funds, before we went and took anything out of open space.
So, let me follow up with that. If you take 750 out of the equation of the 1.4 million, then what you've got left is 650, and in Luke's memo, you've got two $600,000 projects, a $50,000 project, and then 150 survey and engineering project. What do you not do?
What do you not do? Well, you, I would start with, I would start with what you can do, and maybe just do, start with the Watson House, because I think that's the, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, is that the simplest? Because I feel like that was what the work session, the feasibility consultants recommended, that we start with a smaller project, and, and made sense. So, it, it, I don't know.
Let me-
What page are you on for the money again?
The page before the funding source. Page, yeah, page four is the project cost, page five is the funding source. Luke, let me ask you this-
I see.
Let me ask it this way, Luke. This, the survey and engineering, 150,000 estimate, can you explain the necessity of that, number one? Number two, if it's an easy $50,000 per, that's, that's one thing, but do you have any way of breaking out how much for each of the three?
At this time, no, because obviously this would go to RFQ, RFP, and we'd get cost data. However, I hear you from what you're saying, right? If you want first-in funds to be affordable housing, we come back for second consideration, we can do that. This is all a schematic work plan, right? So, what I'm getting for feedback now is like gold for me, because this tells me, okay, we may not want to touch those open space funds, or if we're going to do it, we want to give pause before, before we go back. So, I can certainly, as we issue RFPs and we get cost data, we can come back to the council and say, hey, listen, we're higher, lower, we can shift along the way. The, the idea here is to get out of the gate with some direction, so.
So, I just to answer your question, Mike, it's exactly easy, in my mind. Wakefield is, according to Luke's memo, is about 600,000 to 10 malish, and Oliver Watson is 50, so that's 650. It doesn't include all the engineering, but we're close, because that's the engineering for all three sites, so there might be a, a little bit. So if we leave South Road, as Jim said, standing for a while, six months longer, then we can, we'll have more time to talk about it, we can try to maybe identify something else, or maybe there is a grant, and that's the one where we were thinking, we were going to try to get a grant. Do you see what I'm saying?
I got a question for Brian, Sylvia. Related to the real estate conveyance tax, any idea how much we receive annually? I know that's sort of up and down based on sales activity in town, but if we're talking about taking an account that has 1.4, using about 750, balance will now be about 750, what do we talk, seeing as far as replenishment of that account? So we feel a little more comfortable in using monies from the open space acquisition fund?
Sure.
If we decided to reallocate, if there's money, revenue coming in, we can. Go ahead.
So, paraphrasing at this point, I don't have it in front of me, I'm going off memory, which I look at it enough, but, um, so going off-
We know you don't like to do that.
Going off of last year, which again, you have to take into account, was really a banner year for the town in terms of conveyance revenue. Affordable housing took in just north of 450,000. We had go to the general fund to support operations of just over 200,000, and we had debt service payments supported by the conveyance of about 150,000. So all in, was that about 700,000, I think? It was between 650 and 700,000 we took, all in last year. That was again, a very big year. We hadn't, I don't think we had been north of 600,000 in the previous couple of years, so.
So it's possible that if we wanted to allocate maybe half of the real estate conveyance tax to the open space acquisition fund, we could get it back over a million? Even after taking the 750 now towards this project?
Yeah, you could pay it back. You're, so the bottom line is, you're getting about 450 a year into the affordable housing fund that you can use, or you could reallocate that to pay, literally pay back the open space fund. The other thing Brian just mentioned to me is, we have 750,000 authorized on issue bond notes for open space acquisition as well, just for your consideration. So if we were in a position where we really needed to buy a piece of land, and we wanted to issue to, to be able to purchase something, it's just something for consideration. It gives us flexibility, but to your point, yes, you could pay yourself back probably within, within two years to be able to, to pay off that incurrence of the open space. So essentially lending yourself money to, to front the work.
I, I just want to make sure I understand what you just said, Luke. You're talking about bonding capacity for open space?
Yes. If you're in a pinch and you really needed the funds, and we didn't have it on hand, cash on hand, you could go that route.
As opposed to having money in the account?
Correct.
Let me, let me ask Jim, I suppose the shortest way to say this is, what's the downside of doing nothing with Wakefield School now?
So, the school is deteriorating at a, a quite faster rate than the other properties because of the, the damage that it's sustaining from windows, graffiti, entrances, water damage, and so forth. The downside is that eventually, within a year, that place, we can't keep up cleaning graffiti, replacing windows and the damage. So, it is a blight to the town, right? And if it isn't right now, then it will be very soon. Like I said, we took down some trees that, or we were about to take them down, we discovered more broken windows in it. So, it's become a focal point of, of, of damage. So, I, I, all, what I guess I'm trying to say is, I would like the council to give direction, if the choice is to use the building, then let's do it. Let's, let's try and move forward, clean it up, and get going. But I just don't see, Mr. Marin, I just, I just don't, it's becoming, it's really gone downhill.
The phrase that came to mind to me was public nuisance, or attractive nuisance.
It is.
Which means, Chief, Chief Moynihan's going to wind up spending more time there.
Oh yeah, Chief Moynihan's spent a lot of time there, and detectives are constantly, they made an arrest over there, but, but it really, it's just becoming the focal point for kids probably coming from out of town, too. I just, I just don't see, it's becoming a public safety issue, too. We start getting a lot of kids going in those buildings, someone's going to get hurt.
Go ahead.
So Brian, just to reiterate, you're saying that if, from this plan, if we use 750,000 of, from the open space funds, you were projecting off the top of your head, not from the data in front of you, but from what you remember, that we could replenish those open space funds in two years?
As of right now, no. The, the, all the funds are going into affordable housing currently. Previously, the funds were being split in, with the bulk of it going into afford, um, open space. Currently, everything is going into, so that would take an action by council to redirect some of those, yes.
Right, but if we, if we did vote to replenish that-
Sure.
-we could possibly have it replenished in two years.
Yes.
And I think we're all pro-open space here, it's one of the best parts of our town, is driving down and watching, looking at a farm that, with the sunset, it's, it's beautiful. Jamie, you could answer from the, from what percentage of our town is preserved open space? One-third?
One-third.
One-third, right? Okay. And so my last question, or actually my comment is, I'm looking at the press release from the governor's office about the first wave of housing bonds that Vice President Marin put in here. We have a, up to, provides up to 8 million for municipalities and developers to offset the cost of essential infrastructure. That's the first wave additionally, to help assist municipalities for architectural and engineering work. I think that we have a really good shot at the apple here. I think that, councilors, I think that this, if, what Brian's saying here, and we put the real estate conveyance tax back into this, into the open space funds next year, we'd possibly repay ourselves back in two years. It'd be an investment into making sure that we don't have blighted property anymore. And I think that we really should make the choice tonight to move this, this process forward. And that's my opinion, because I think we have a great opportunity here, I think this memo is good, I think we should move forward with this.
So-
Go ahead, I got a few more questions too, but go ahead.
I just would present a different approach. First of all, if you reallocate, all of it goes back to affordable housing, we've depleted, I mean, all of it goes to open space, now affordable housing has zero. So that's not, what?
Go ahead, Jim.
No, I'll finish that.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that? I would, I would-
And I don't, that wasn't what I expressed initially.
Okay, okay.
I got an, an expectation as to the projected revenues from the real estate conveyance tax, and then took what he gave me and said, okay, if we allocate 50% of the amount received in the subsequent year, we could put the open space acquisition back above a million, without leaving housing fund unaffected, because we'd also be increasing that.
So I was just saying, it's two, for me, it's two things. It's project and funding, right? So to me, if you start with the Watson Hou, home, that doesn't go, we don't, it doesn't need to be funded through taking out open space, any, taking out of that 750. You following? Yeah?
Yes.
So then, and then, it also covers Wakefield, being demolished, because it's not safe, it's a hazard, it's a nuisance, it's blight, it's dangerous, right? So then, that is most of it. We already talked and thought about maybe going a little slower with South Road School, because we would be trying to chase and get a grant. And we can make a decision in six or seven months, how to fund the projects at South Road School. That's all.
We also have-
Without taking, without, sorry, one sec, without, without trying to take any money out of open space, just taking it out of affordable housing and the other-
It doesn't add up, if you only-
Pretty close.
The South Road, though, is, the 200,000 here is from the South Road Fund, which is 302,000, so how would, you know, it doesn't, the math doesn't math.
So if I may suggest, you know, before you get too caught up in the numbers, it's a fluid plan, right? Timing also matters, because every day we're getting that tax conveyance revenue. So you, you had earlier said, we might want to drag South Road along. So we could front-load, let's say, Wakefield School, if that's the will of the council. It's going to take a while. We've got to do RFPs, we've got to deal with contractors, get them out of the gate. So it could take six to eight months to really get going and everything. By that point, you're going to start replenishing that fund, and we can reassess. We may not have to tap into the open space fund. This is sort of a linear equation that I did to show options. But if, what I'm hearing is that we'd like to have a little bit more flexibility, we can do that. Stay on the track you're on, and we can always come back later and readjust, you know? The goal is to take the first baby step, and then, and then I can work with the council coming back with the manager.
I got, I got a few, Jim, go ahead, and I got some questions.
I just want to focus on one thing that we have to keep in mind when you're making this decision. If we apply for a state grant, if we get it, we're committed to that property for affordable housing. There's no looking back at that point. So if we did get 500,000, a million dollars to assist us taking down the South Road School, we have to keep moving forward with that. If we pay for it on our own, we still retain control of that property, whether to go to a developer, or whatever you want to do with it. But, once we apply, I know you know this, but I just want to clarify, once we apply and we accept anything there, we own it for affordable housing. We're committed.
And I got, I got a few follow-ups.
We're committed to the, the rules of the program also, in, in terms of who, right, right?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, it, there's no looking back, and can't make it a park at that point.
Lock, stock, and barrel, we got to accept it.
So Jim, if we proceeded down the route of demolishing South Road School, would that potentially put us in a better position to receive subsidies from the state, for whatever cost we could get subsidies for, to move forward with housing?
That's a good question, I had that same conversation with Jamie Rabbit today, and he'd be best to answer that, because that's his area. But I think, without getting into too much, I think, once he's done giving you an explanation, if, I'll know fairly soon, if I'm directed by the council to ask for funds for South Road, whether we can get it or not. When I say fairly soon, within a month, I'm sure we'd get an answer yes or no, but if, so, and then I would bring it back to the council. But I'll turn it back over to Jamie now.
So again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. With regards to South Road School, the closer you can get that site to developability, the better you are. However, there's an asterisk around that, or a star. If you tear the school down, you're not going to be able to get subsequent funds, or use the money you've spent to tear the school down for a match, for other funding that came about. The council mentioned a number of 120 million dollars that's coming out of statewide housing. That 120 million has a number of buckets. There may be 40 or 50 million in first homeowners buying program and mortgage incentives, so that, that's not there. So there's a significant amount of that 120, that's already allocated the projects that aren't in our bucket. South Road School, Wakefield, or Oliver Watson. What I do know is although we didn't get funding in this last grant round, there are- get funding in this last grant round, there are three additional funding sources that are available to us. They just announced 8 million dollars, and I think Mr. Wedgemont mentioned that this evening as well as Mr. Marin in his discussions, for specific housing infrastructure, infrastructure development. In addition to that, they're putting out another 1 million dollars specific to municipally owned properties are gonna get ranked higher on the preliminary engineering. And again, all three of our sites would be available for that. Surveying, engineering, site prep, design would all be eligible for that. Those grants, uh, one has an ending date of 11/28, another one has an ending date of 12/5. It's usually a month or two after those grants close until we know more information. So, I think I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Manny said earlier. He's asking you to potentially make decisions to move forward on the program, but in essence, not start a tear down until we exhaust funding opportunities in the potentially next four to six months. And Jim mentioned, we can reach out to other state agencies. Jim's mentioned he can reach out to the governor's office to see what our probability of receiving funding moving forward is. If they're saying we're not gonna get housing infrastructure program money, if we're not gonna get, and there's another program, MTAP, which is Municipal Technical Assistance Program, that has a kind of a rolling every three to six months, another grant opportunity. But we can reach out on behalf of Mr. Manny and see whether we're even gonna be eligible or considered for this fund, next funding round. It may not be six months. To Jim's point, we may find out in a month that the governor says, no, there are other higher priority projects in the state and unfortunately, South Kingstown is gonna have to look for other revenue sources. But again, I think moving quickly may actually slow you down in the future. Give us an opportunity to look at the additional grant funds, but still make decisions to, to Luke's point earlier, that yes, you want to move, move forward with the tear down of South Road School. Yes, you want to move forward with the tear down of Wakefield Elementary. And yes, you want to move forward with the subdivision of Oliver Watson, where we break out the house, we leave sufficient acreage left for the redevelopment of the remaining acreage. But also, when we break the house off, we make sure we do enough engineering and surveying so that we make sure what we just sold, we don't need six to 12 months from now in the redevelopment of the remaining land. So, it's, I think, you know, Jim said it tonight and Luke said it. Government has a tend to stagnate and take time making decisions. You've been very proactive as a council, and I think if you give staff direction that yes, you want to move forward with Wakefield, Oliver Watson and South Road, it's kind of a small stay for three to six months on the funding recourses, but you are all in favor of moving forward with South Road tear down, Wakefield tear down and Oliver Watson. And to your point, if you apply for grants specific to housing, you're gonna be committed to the programs you're representing as you apply and receive those grants. So, South Road School, if you apply for a grant to tear down the school for affordable housing, and it's 500,000, you kind of committed yourself to moving forward, and Mr. Arcillo could probably tell you, the only way to get out of that would potentially give the grant money back someday. Uh, there's always an exit strategy. But again, the, the funds could or may be available. We just don't know right now.
So, Jamie, just to respond there, uh, in response to what you said there, and I'm trying to understand, sounds like you're saying that we will not be in a better position to receive more funding if we spend money now and proceed with demolition. Sounds like what you're saying is that, South Road rather, sounds like what you're saying is that we should take the opportunity to seek out the funds now, not use town monies to do the demolition because we're potentially losing money on the table. There's maybe more benefit to get through the subsidies now than there would be if we proceed with demolishing now with town money and then seeking subsidies after the fact.
One thing I can, if you, if you demo the school now, I can't apply for grant money to demo the school, so I'll lose six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars right there. So, again, it does put, the clo, I will say, the closer you get to development potential, which is the removal of the school, it does move you closer to development potential. But it doesn't necessarily put you in a better light for seeking additional grant funds. They're gonna look at it the same way. You're still away from shoveling the ground.
Is there more monies to be received for demolition type work than there is for work to be done after demolition?
It, it's grant by grant basis. So, until they send the next round out, I cannot answer that question because we don't have those buckets right now.
Good.
In terms of, um, turning this into a motion that we can have a consensus on, um, it seems like everybody understands the project side of it and everybody is supportive of it, if I'm not mistaken. Um, on the funding side, I think that the question is holding back with respect to South Road School, and that's 600,000. But the way the funding is set up, um, it doesn't quite add up. But if we changed the 750 figure for now, um, to 150, then you'd have enough money to take care of Wakefield School, Oliver Watson and the engineering studies, and then see what happens with South Road School and the grant. Does that make sense?
So, yes, it does. And to what Jamie's saying, not to convolute matters at all, you can give us authority tonight to move forward. Like I said, it, it's not like we're rushing to the office tomorrow and starting to draft up our, our FPs, right?
Starting the bulldozer.
It takes time to do this stuff. So, honestly, by the time we even get to the end of the grant periods, you know, we'll have things ready in place, no matter who pays the bill. So, as long as we have that authorization, we can wait and see what comes. And, but the important thing tonight is setting us on the right direction so we know we can start working because we can't wait another six months because that delays us another six months.
Go ahead.
So, I have two, two, I think I have my two final things. One is, I recall that you had done some work on South Road School, like we did a hazardous materials, blah, blah, blah. Love that fancy language.
Yeah, that limited hazardous building material assessment. That, that's actually a great question and point. Um, so yes, and that's where I originally got the estimate for the demo. One of those needs to be done immediately for Wakefield School if we're gonna move in that direction with that facility as well.
So, we, we spent some money on South Road already. We did the hazardous assessment and we did an appraisal too, I think.
We did not do an appraisal on that property. We have done it previously on Oliver Watson, but it's way outdated, so.
Okay, alright.
But again, one would need, appraisals need to be done. We need to check the septic at Oliver Watson because it hasn't been used, water at Watson. So, there's a lot of, a lot of steps to even get it prepped for sale.
Okay. So, thank you. And then, my other thing is like a down the road thing. So, we just amended the rules to talk about purchases or whatever, and I, this would be one of the aspects that I think if we, if we, because these are town council goals, these properties, repurposing, redevelopment, that the new business items related to them come off as a practice so that, not because we worry about the amount, but because I would like the opportunity for the public to hear about all of the progress. And if it's on the consent agenda, it could get swept away. Because many people in the public all of a sudden wake up and go, what? This is happening now? And I'm like, yeah, we've been talking about it for a year or two years. So, by keeping it uh, off the consent agenda, say like the survey or the appraisal, it would give us one more little mini-commercial to tell the public where the progress is and we could talk about it for a minute. That's, because I feel like what happens is, people woke up and said, Wakefield? What? And, and then they went on this whole other thing about, you know, they think that it's all gonna be not a park or we've already sold it to developers. I mean, we've done a lot of rotten things and we didn't do anything. So, my point would be to think about, that would be an ask. I would want Jim to pull things related to these projects off the consent agenda so that we could always keep talking to the public. Does that make sense?
Yep, he's got the discretion. He's listening.
Do you hear, Jim? I think, I think there's a consensus, but I'm not sure.
Yes, of course, we can do that. But once again, it's in your control anyway.
I know.
Even if it's on consent, you just say, no, I want this on new business, then you talk about it then. But yes, if you want me to put everything related to these three projects on new business, of course we can do that.
Or even for a while, until it gets routine, like, you know, just like the school building project, it was every meeting and now it's once a month, just so that the public starts to understand the three projects and where we're at.
If I may get direction from the council though, just to intervene for a bit, anything under 10,000 is under the town manager's purview. And I realize that, so the reason I bring this up is, the hazardous building material assessment's 98 hundred dollars. The appraisal's typically under 10,000. In the interest of expediency, I would ask that those, even though the manager might want to bring those to your attention, that we maybe have discretion to just report those out.
Yes.
So, so that way we can keep the process rolling. That would be my ask.
I, I just, I'm just always looking for the public to understand what we're doing and not be like, what the heck happened?
No, I, I already committed. Anything related to the three properties, even if it's 7,000, 8,000, we'll put it on the agenda so you can do what you gotta do.
Thanks, Jim.
Can, can we also make sure that this memo is on the, on the, uh, town website?
It's, it's not on here?
I couldn't, is it on the website?
It's on the agenda.
No, it's not.
No, but it's, there's not a link to the memo.
But yeah, if, if Nicole could attach the October 6 memo to Patty's email under this item on the agenda so the public has it.
No problem.
All right, a few other thoughts. Number one, in response to what we had just been talking about here, in the event there's items that are under 10,000 that require expediency, I would not expect that you bring it to the, uh, town council agenda just for the formality of having us, you know, vote on it.
I agree.
Not if it's gonna hold something up. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Well, I don't, you're gonna vote for it. I mean, it's not, you know, I'm bringing it so that the point made that the people of this town know we're moving forward with this stuff. If it's 8, 9,000, whether I just sign off on it on Munis or bring it here, you're gonna vote for it. It's so, it's obvious by your intention tonight. I don't think it'll slow us down at all.
I don't want to, I don't, I didn't, I didn't, I appreciate that because I did not want to slow us down, but I just don't want it to get blurred into this. I can imagine the consent agenda becomes longer and longer and then we're, we miss that opportunity to explain it to the public.
There's not gonna be that many items that we're gonna be putting on for this stuff. But it's, I don't think it'll slow us down, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with, use your excellent judgment.
Yeah, well, that's what I've been doing, so we'll just keep doing, so we'll, I, when in doubt, I let the council know about it. I don't care what the amount is, so we'll, 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 we'll figure that part out. That's, that's the easy part to figure out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right, one last thought. I just want to raise this point and for us to consider, you know, it seems like, uh, there's a want to sort of seek out what sort of subsidies we could potentially get related to demolition, infrastructure type costs related to South Road. Uh, I just think that, you know, based on our experience, uh, you know, with the Housing Secretary trying to seek, uh, state monies related to these projects, you know, it hasn't been successful up to this point. And I don't believe that we've gotten sort of the best guidance as to how to go about this to be in a position to best succeed to get the monies. Um, so I think that, from my perspective, in light of that, I think, you know, there is a reason to potentially want to move forward with South Road two at this juncture, along with the other two properties. Um, I like the outlining of the plan here and I think it makes sense, the use of those monies is an opportunity to replenish it as we discussed. Um, but if the council feels more comfortable waiting that out, trying to see what kind of subsidies we can get, I'm totally on board with that. I just think it's worth considering the idea of, you know, moving forward, expending the monies. It's going to get the property into a better position to be developed for housing, and I think potentially be in a better position at that point to receive subsidies. But, uh, if we're not all on board with that, I'm fine with, you know, waiting it out, seeing what we can get and go from there. So, just a thought.
Thank you. I think we need a motion.
Do you want me to go back to what I originally proposed as a compromise? For the council to follow along, the, with respect to the, the work plan, the resolution of the council is to approve the work plan as described in the October 6 memo, and specifically with regard to Wakefield Elementary, Oliver Watson and the survey and engineering work, to approve those amounts immediately. And then with respect to the funding source on page five, to approve the 450,000, uh, from the Affordable Housing Fund, the 200 from the existing South Road School Fund, and 150 from the open space reallocation so that Brian can actually switch those funds. If you take 150 there, um, plus the 450, plus the 200, you come up to a total of eight, and that will fund Wakefield Elementary, Oliver Watson and the 150 for the survey and engineering.
I think, I'm gonna go second, I second, and I think that's a great, um, compromise because I, I think that we'll, during the budget, we'll make sure that the first 150,000 from the conveyance tax pays right back if we want to, right? So, I can vote for that and it sounds good.
All right, we got a motion, a second and a discussion. Go ahead.
I'm actually, uh, in agreement with the president. I think that we should move forward with South Road. I don't think that we should let it drop. I understand what Jamie Rabbit said about, um, committing to, uh, the plan if we do get the allocation of funds. But I think that this council has talked about how we want affordable housing at South Road. And I think that it's important for us to keep them all together. I understand, my fellow councilors made some good points tonight. I think this is a good compromise. But I'm in agreement with the, the president about, uh, adding South Road into that, that project and using the funds. But that is, uh, my discussion point on that.
Any thoughts?
But we could fund that three months from now. At, at any point, we can just put, we can, they're gonna, the work plan, as I understand the motion, was a work plan and we have most of the funding. But we, if we, if the rubber hits the road, we can come back. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the motion does not include funding for any demolition of South Road School.
Correct.
Right, because you're gonna apply for a grant for that.
Well, pending this vote, we're gonna see what happens here.
Okay.
But just for clarity, did this motion include any monies for the planning of South Road?
The engineering?
The engineering?
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies, I thought.
Yeah, it's, I think you would...
It's the six, it's the 600,000 dollar allocation that I'm leaving out to give Jim 60 days to find out whether or not we can get state funding. And realistically, there may be some impetus on the Housing Secretary to say, we want to do this, but we don't have the money yet. What can you do for us?
One option too is, just so you know, I'll probably put out, if we're gonna look at demoing the schools, I would probably put it out for both.
Yeah.
Couple of months gonna go by, we're gonna come back for purchase award. We can, you can always allocate funds at that time and that might have an answer at that point by the grants. So, again, timing is a factor here. So, uh, I'm just pointing that out.
I think it's fine.
All right, Mike, what do you got?
For all of us at this table, could you repeat the motion? Because we want to be, this is important and we want to be sure it is correct.
Give me a second.
Sure, no, take your time. We want to do this right.
Yep.
So, the motion is to approve the work plan as outlined in the October 6, 2025 memo to James Manny from Lucas Murray, and to change the allocation for immediate funding from the real estate conveyance task, tax designated for open space, instead of 750,000 to 150,000 for now. And that the work identified on page four can immediately start with respect to Wakefield Elementary at a cost of 60, 600,000, Oliver Watson property at a cost of 50,000, and the survey and engineering work at all three sites, including South Road, for 150.
That, that makes sense. What it means is you're taking 600,000 from, from the open space fund and moving it to the Affordable Housing Fund.
150.
Only 150.
Only 150.
Thank you.
Luke's memo says 750.
You're taking 150.
I'm taking 150 and that still adds up, both sides of the ledger, ledger now say 800,000.
Right. So, you, you have enough money to accomplish the goals of taking down the Wakefield School and of doing the surveys and doing the studies that, for all three.
Yes.
Correct. And Oliver Watson.
All right, we have a motion, a second. It's been...
Just, Brian pointed out something. It's 200,000 of what you just allocated is specific to South Road School, so I can't use that towards Wakefield School. I'd have to use it for that bucket. So, you'd have to allocate another 200,000 out of the open space fund in order to frontload the Wakefield School.
That's why we have Brian. So I need to amend the motion to 200 instead of 150?
350.
350.
Or we could take 50 from, we have 50 from the survey, oh no.
We don't. So.
So you gotta increase the ones from this, from 150 to 350.
If we took it only, 350,000 are un-audited FY 2025, you're in, but that one should be around a million dollars.
Got it.
So, but you.
Yeah, all right. I can, I can withdraw the motion and.
No, no, all you have to do is replace the part that says 150.
Got it.
To 350.
Okay.
For Affordable Housing.
Well, also, Mike, he's not taking any monies from the South Road School, so that is no longer part of this motion.
Totally understood.
And that's why we're increasing.
The Wakefield.
Well, we're increasing the funding source, the real estate conveyance tax designated for open space to 350,000. And that still comes up to a total of 800 on both sides of the ledger.
So I'm just, I will second it, and then I will say I'm very uncomfortable. I really want, I really want all of us to think about if we're gonna actively try to replenish that open space in the next budget cycle actively. Because it, I don't, I don't like doing that, but, because.
I feel confident that we can replenish, we can change the distribution, the ratio, however, I don't really, percentages.
You can.
I know.
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, I'll, I swear, well, we can do that.
I know.
I mean, I think it's important, but.
I just want to go back and just put it right back, so, or as quickly as possible.
Right.
So is that to be done in March? Like, what do you think?
You know, I think, let's rely on Brian to see how the conveyance taxes are coming in, because depending on how it comes in, you may get closer to your goal.
So could we refine it to just say, up, you know, up to 350,000, Mike? Because if he, if in three months, the Affordable Housing Fund is 525, maybe we don't need, could we just change it to up to?
So up to.
Not to exceed.
Up to.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Sure.
Okay, so I want to be clear what we're talking about here. Now, the motion is to include $450,000 from the real estate conveyance taxes designated to Affordable Housing, use of that. In addition to that, 350,000 from the real estate conveyance tax designated for open space acquisition, for a total of 800,000. Those monies will be used for the funding, which Mike Maron outlined earlier. There was no change to the costs that were to be spent on with the monies that I just outlined.
Not to exceed, yep.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We had some discussion deliberation about the potential to include South Road. I'm still open to it, but, you know, want to work in tandem with everybody. If we don't feel comfortable yet, we want to seek out what sort of subsidies we can get in the next few months. I'm okay with that. What do you think?
I think, I like that. Seek out whatever we can, look at the subsidies that we might get, and then also look at whatever the regulations are for us to accept that money and make sure that it's consistent with what we want to do.
I'm in agreement with that, and if, if you get a sense that we're not gonna get any funding, or that the first round, come right back to us, and let's reconsider the motion to add South Road to it.
Okay, and I think there's an intent to discuss potentially reallocating the amount of real estate conveyance tax revenues such that we can replenish the amount in the open space acquisition fund. Just wanted to state that in the event that we're talking about funding demolition at South Road, I want us to look at the potential of using the monies in the open space acquisition fund to fund that as has been outlined tonight. I don't want to be in a position four months from now where we've, you know, making effort to replenish those funds such that we're not gonna use any monies from there, and then be in a position, we don't know if there's any fund that is recommended to fund demolition at South Road. Just throwing that out there now for everyone to think about.
Yes, but we also have, you could also, the undesignated fund is flexible, and we could take out the balance from there. There's, there's, we don't have.
In April?
We don't have to raid the open space.
That may be a tougher discussion topic.
So we'll see how we go.
Mr. President, I'm with you on that. Let's relook at it when it comes up, right? Cross our fingers.
All right. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Patty.
All right, it's gonna bring us to the town manager's report.
Thank you. Before we get into the town manager's report, just to remind everyone who's watching tonight, and the council doesn't need reminding, this is the revised agenda we're trying tonight, and I think we've gotten a lot done in the past hour and a half of town business that, so I think this revised agenda is working so far, all right? So, but let's get into the meat of the town manager's report. So Veolia water ban has been a topic of discussion for months, and we still are in a water ban right now, and I've requested, there were a couple of things that were requested this week. Rich Bourbonet is here from the Director of Public Services, and Chris Jacobs is here representing Veolia. Chris is still here, correct? Yep. And one of the questions that came up is, Chris Jacobs from Veolia had made a statement that he was monitoring the wells every week to see if the aquifer was going back up to a fairly normal rate. Rich Bourbonet looked at the data that Mr. Jacobs showed him, and I'll let Rich go over that first since that was the first question, that he truly was looking at the water rates, seeing what that aquifer was going. And Rich, I'll have you start off first.
So we, Chris and I met with, along with Brett Whaley, our water supervisor, superintendent, and, you know, we just kind of went over all the data. And, you know, on Thursday, Chris's group had done some additional testing to see what the water elevations were in the wells, and it showed a modest increase over the previous week. And I looked at all the data from the previous few testings through the summer, through the late summer, and it stayed, it was going down, but then it stayed relatively stagnant as far as the elevation goes for the last few testings. And this was the first time there was a modest increase. So we talked at length. I would say it was a pretty productive meeting, and we, Chris, you know, went over a bunch with his group after we had left, and then came to the conclusion that we could at least alleviate some of the pressure that we were having. And so we moved forward with the, with the release of some of the bans, so it became odd even for the first four days of the week, Monday, well, Monday through Thursday, and then full water ban on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So that's where we're at right now. And then Chris was, Chris can speak for himself, but he's gonna do some additional testing later this week, and if we continue to see some increase, then I guess we'll review again.
Rich, just to clarify, the question that came up today as well from council was the burn permits. If it's an odd even water day, they can, burn permits could be issued by the police department, correct, chief?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not, it's not part of what we do. I know they come through the chiefs, and it's Union Fire, and, yeah, so, okay, good.
The chief, I just want to clarify that if there's an odd even water day, you can obtain a burn permit, same as, you know, watering the lawn on that odd or even day. Chief, anything else you want to say on that?
No, that's just, that's to confirm it, and we changed that today with dispatch. So anyone that does call in, if it is on a day that they're permitted to water, then they would be issued a burn permit. Obviously, Thursday, or Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there'd be no burn permits issued until the water ban is lifted on those days. Yes.
Oh, no, no, I'm waiting my turn. Thank you.
That's really your job.
Yes.
So what is a burn permit? Why would someone need that? What requires them to have one?
Sure. So I think last meeting we talked about, the police department oversees the issuance of the burn permit, but really the decision of whether a burn permit is issued or not is really with the fire department. We work with Union and Kingston Fire with that. When the ban went into effect, a question came up as far as if someone's not able to use water, they don't have the hose accessible, should we really be issuing burn permits? Because, you know, they should have water available and close by when they are burning, and this would be for leaves, shrubs, that type of thing, that they're burning in their yard. They let us know ahead of time. We know that it's happening. We could inspect the site, or the Union Fire could go out and make sure that it's not a fire that's dangerous or would endanger other areas. The regulation on the burn permit also comes into play with the dryness, so if we have a long period of drought where, or high winds where the burn, the ambers could go and then cause a larger fire, then we wouldn't be issuing burn permits during those times.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Yes.
So just a question. Did you handle this after 10:30 this morning, the talking with the dispatch and all that, or before? Because there was, a resident reached out and was very confused this morning. So there, that's this whole burn thing.
Yeah, I issued a memorandum this morning, probably after 10:30 this morning, to really bring us up to speed of the new regulations with the odd even, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then tied into when we're issuing burn permits. But the directive before was anytime there, you know, we're not issuing burn permits while the water ban is in effect. So nothing had changed on ours, other than now bringing up the new updates to the water ban.
So the resident also said that they may also need to hear from DEM Forestry regarding a burn. I don't know, this.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. So there was definitely confusion this morning. So will, people who want a burn will just follow the odd even according to the water.
They have to contact and get a burn permit, yes.
Okay, perfect.
As they typically would do.
So chief, this is not like a fire pit situation in the backyard. This is different. This is distinct from that.
Specifically to remove like leaves, brush, that type of thing. Fire pit's different, and we don't issue burn permits for fire pits.
So people will just have a fire in the backyard and burn all the leaves, huh?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Because they may not have a way to transport all their yard waste to the dump.
Kids don't do it. If you had neighbors that did it, you'd know, because the smoke's all coming in your house.
Right.
All right.
Can we go back to the water ban piece for a sec? So a resident, a resident, I guess, tried, attempted to APRA the water level records that the, that the testing was, and learned that, and Jim told me that their records are not subject to APRA because they're not a public entity. So then I was like, well, can we get the council to see what the levels are? And then it was allowed that Rich was able to inspect, and that's how we know, he did, basically did an audit of the levels, right? So, thank you. My question is, Middlebridge and South Shore, are they in the same water ban? Or is it just, is it town-wide?
Well, it's, no. It's not town-wide, but it includes Middlebridge and South Shore and Narragansett because we all receive our water wholesale from Veolia.
Okay.
Kingston Water does not, has its own system. They have 1,200 customers, and they don't, they don't have some of the problems we're having.
Okay. So right now, is this odd even water ban Monday through, Monday through Thursday?
Yes.
All right. I just want to do a quick follow-up on, no, to you, Rich, as to your review of the data that Veolia allowed you to review here. Now, based on the representations made by Chris of Veolia at the, you know, the past meeting, and the meeting prior to that, the data that you reviewed today, does that substantiate the statements you've made to us as to the cause?
It does.
And other statements he's made relating to the water ban?
It does. And, you know, we didn't only review, you know, this year. We looked at some of the historic data going back many, many years. And from what I could see, from what I reviewed, we are at the second lowest place these, these systems has, this system has ever seen. So it is low.
So it's really just, you know, the rainwater not seeping in to.
The hydraulic cycle is fickle, and you know, you.
What's that word?
Hydr.
Fickle?
Fickle, what is that?
No, it's peculiar. So it's, you know, you, when you have such dry conditions for such a long period of time, the water is mostly making its way to some of the upper, the upper horizons of the soil strata. So it's, it's really not making its way all the way down. So it's not until you have good, long periods of soaking rain, and then even multiple rain events before you start to see those types of increases that we're looking for. And that's exactly what happened. We started to see some rain through the September, and, you know, now into October, we've had a couple of substantial rainstorms, and now you're starting to see a bump. And it's supposed to rain, I think, even more tomorrow, the day after, or Thursday or something, so it'll even get better, hopefully.
So can we predict, like, timeframe as to like a full way out of this odd even and full ban on weekends?
No, I think that would be a difficult prediction. I don't know that you can predict.
Well, are any patterns in the data that you reviewed, the historical data? I mean.
What I can tell you is that it's trending up, okay, after, after one, one particular test, and, you know, I'd like to think it continues to trend up. Myself, as a, as a person that looks at data all the time, I would rather see a few data points before you start to really say, yes, it is trending up, and then, and then I'm certain that Veolia would, would be comfortable with, with, you know, making a bigger, broader change to the ban.
But for the time being, we're still in a drought.
We are in a moderate drought. Actually, Chris, I think, has more information on that. We still are in a moderate drought for this part of the state, but I know there was discussion that the drought has ended and all this. It is not. That, that's not the case for the southern part of the state, but, you know.
Good evening. Yeah, thanks for having me. Yes, he's correct. I brought some data. I can share it. All right, so this is, this is the US drought monitor, and we could just go through some dates here, but just to show you, actually, I'll move it back. All right, so this is, this is dated, oh, it's not showing. We can start here. This shows May 2025, May 20th. So as you could see, you know, the region, we weren't too bad. We were getting some spring rains finally. We're coming out of a winter drought. I can, I can move it back to January, actually. So if you want to look at the beginning of the year, we were heavily in a drought in the Northeast, right? So during the wintertime, we experienced the winter drought, which didn't allow us to really recover from the usage that we had last year, right? So as coming into the springtime, we were really concerned about that. And then we would, we did, the state of Rhode Island did have an official drought at that time. So moving through the year, we ended up getting some decent rain around the April, May timeframe, so we'll just jump into May. So we'll just jump into May. And so we ended up coming out of that drought. The drought committee, steering committee recommended it and we came out of the drought in June. Okay? This is July first. Heavy usage going on at this time. This is the normal time we start experiencing heavy usage. Uh, we're still out of the drought. But as you can see, some of the area starts, around New England, starts showing some slight yellow and is adnormally dry. Some of the brown is moderate dry.
But Chris, on this, we're not in a drought, right? July twenty twenty five, that's what this says?
So July, yep, July twenty twenty five, we are not yet in the drought. Nope.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm showing you the trending, how we, how we ended up where we are.
No, I understand. I'm just asking you showing us this. I want to make sure I'm reading the map right.
Yep. July fifteenth. Starts creeping, it's about the same. It's, uh, towards the end of July, we start seeing it getting a little more dry. And then we start seeing it in August. I'll just jump to August twelfth. August twelfth, a lot of New England getting drier again. So we came out of the, the drought in June because we had some nice rains, but we started going right back into it in our heavy usage season. Okay? At this time, we were having a, during the July period, if you remember, we're having a lot of, a hard time keeping up with the tanks. Because, and, and that's when we came here and presented before. Rich had some great data that showed there was a lot of irrigation that we're seeing. And that's when we initially, we started, we initially issued the odd and even. We saw no reduction in water during that odd and even. And so as we started watching it, our tank levels were still not recovering. We weren't being able to, to keep up with the demand at that time. And so then we had to revert to the, to the full water ban. So as this is happening, our area is getting drier and drier. So as we're pulling out of the aquifer, we're not replenishing it. Right? We're, we're not seeing any type of rain to replenish that aquifer. Get to September thirtieth. All of New England is in a terrible drought. If I were to show you the rest of the United States, we look like the West. You know, mid, southwest area. And Rhode Island in particular. It's hard to see down here, but the southern part of the region is moderate drought. And in the rest of the state, it, it shows abnormally dry. October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, we're still considered abnormally dry. And in the southern part of the state, you know, moderate drought. It wasn't until last week that we started, here's October twenty first. It wasn't until last week, that last, um, reading where majority of Rhode Island is back to normal and southern part is still considerate, moderate, or abnormally dry. So with the combined heavy usage over the summertime, dropping the aquifer levels and nothing recharging it, you know, that's, that's the original, that's why we ended up in extended water restrictions. So, you know, we took our readings last week. We showed it, you know, to Richard and he confirmed, you know, we, we did see a little bit of an increase. So now mainly, we may, basically with some of the rain, we get some sponginess back into the, into the ground where more rains now are going to help seep through. It's not just a hard pack now. So as we continue to monitor the weather, monitor our wells, you know, we start seeing some increase. And I like to see, like Rich said, too, several data points that show that we're tracking in the right direction that we could further back off or completely eliminate the water restrictions.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris, thanks for coming tonight. I got a couple of questions. So Violia has owned our water for how long? Or when did you buy our water?
So it was, we were originally, we were United Water and we were purchased, well, Suez, and we were purchased by Violia about three years ago.
Okay, but Violia itself as a company has been invested in South Kingston for the past three years?
This company, yes.
That's right, right. And so, well, we're dealing with Violia, right? You work for Violia?
Correct.
Right, okay. So the last time that you came up here, the last meeting, I asked you, what public relations outreach have you done to the customers of South Kingston, Kingston and, and Narragansett? And you told me that you send a postcard out.
We, yeah, we usually do send a postcard out prior to with recommendations on how to conserve. Yep.
All right, and you're aware that other utility companies, because we'll call you utility company, right?
Right, yeah.
You, you're aware of other utility companies like Rhode Island Energies send bi-monthly, flashy, colorful infographics about electricity use and heat use and all that? Is there a plan with Violia to adopt those good practices in order to really get that outreach to the public? Because I think you said, and if I'm misquoting you, let me know, but to paraphrase, it's a lot of the irrigation is, it's the usage of the consumer irrigation. That's a lot of what's happening here, right? Not the replenishment, but the use of it, right? So are you committed to go back to your company and say, hey, town council has been asking for it, a new plan? You know, your communication to the public affairs folks need to get the message like, hey, what you're doing is not enough. We are getting feedback from the public that they are sick of this. You're in the, you've been our, you know, our water folks for the past three years. As Vice President Marin has eloquently said many times, this problem is not going away, climate change is intensifying.
Right.
So can we, can we have you committed to go back to Violia and say, hey, we need a new public relations campaign to kind of educate the consumers? Because I, frankly, I'm bemused that you think a postcard is enough in the, in the, in the days of junk mail.
Yep, we've, we've talked about it and I, we're working on a, a better plan on how to get the communication out. Yeah.
Okay, because just to follow what you said, you know, it is the, the consumers that need to change their habits.
Correct.
And you're the company, so you got to educate them, right? Because we keep saying it to them, like, hey, it's Violia's owning it. And just my second question, because I know my colleagues have questions. This is not going away, right? I know you're a multi, multinational company that has lots and lots of different investments in different parts of the country. So we can really only ask you about South Kingston. Now, when we ask you questions about the water, we got some rain last week and sometimes you say, well, the rain came down too hard and we couldn't, it didn't collect, right? We didn't collect that water. And we have often, often ask you like, hey, if we get two inches of wa, rain one day, how much does that go into the aquifer? How much can that look like, right? Two, two inches could be, you know, point five inches of collected. And we don't know those metrics and I don't, don't think you brought those yet.
Well, those are almost impossible to measure, yeah.
They're almost impossible to measure?
Correct.
Why is that?
It's, there's a lot of different factors, you know? Then it's, it can be, for instance, this year with the, with the, with the drought, you get the hard pack. So we can have five inches of rain, but a lot of that ends up as a runoff because it's not soaking in. Next rains, after we get a few and you get the ground more spongy, then you can, you know, one inches of rain could translate into a lot more that feeds down into aquifer. It's, it's nothing, it's not, there's too many variables to be able to quantify that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. And, and just my last thing is runoff goes too fast, right? It becomes storm water, you know, we can't collect it. Within your company, has there been R and R on technology to collect that, that runoff? Is there things, R and D, R and D, sorry.
Yeah.
Is there R and D that, or promising technology that your company is investing in or other companies invested in to say, hey, we're getting, we need to collect more water in South Kingston? Is there something that we can invest in, that Violia can invest in?
Uh, I'd have to look into it. It's nothing that I've experienced and I've been in the business for nearly thirty years and it's not something I've seen where we collect the, the runoff or the storm drain runoff and be able to collect it and, but there's?
Maybe I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert, right?
No, I understand what you're trying to say, what you're, what you're coming up with. How do we be able to collect some of that runoff?
How can we adapt?
Right.
Right?
I, I, there may be some ways we can research it that I'm not aware of. But I'd also, you know, I, I have no problems with any of you coming and visiting our wellfields to, to show you, like, you know, Tucker Town is, one of the ones was replenishing a lot. But surrounding it is a lot of wetlands, right? That's a great collection point. But if it's not raining, you know, I mean, even with the heavy rains, that's not, that's not soaking in. So, I mean, we'd have to look further as far as, I'm not aware of any type of technology that they have where they're collecting storm runoff and so on. You, that's another can of worms, basically, because you don't know what's in that runoff as well. You have cars that are traveling on the roadways and you're trying to take it from the storm drains and so on. Now you have, you know, oils, contaminants in there that you may have to treat to be able to inject it back. So there's a lot of different variables with that, too. Where are you collecting it from and so on, so?
Fair enough, Chris. I think that if there's some good system and technology that you can come back to us and let us know, maybe you didn't find anything, but also the public relations campaign. I'll yield back my time. Thanks.
Yep.
To, to Jay's point, with respect to better public information, I think a lot of this is reactive. We're in a water ban right now. People are upset, neighbors are upset with each other. But we're reacting to a situation. And I understand what you were talking about, that there are too many variables to try and figure out. If you get four inches of rain in two hours, the runoff and the absorption is going to be very different than if you get six hours of rain in two hours, six inches of rain in two hours. I get that. But overall, I think the problem that we have is, as I said before, climate change is here to stay. It's impacting the soil. It's impacting the aquifer's ability to recharge. So we have to do something different collectively, Violia and the public.
Yep.
Part of it is public relations. Part of it is planning ahead because we know if we've had sixteen out of twenty years where there's had to be a water ban or not even plan, the likelihood is, the twenty first year, there's going to be a problem. So we should start planning, Violia should start planning now for next June. If we have another drought in January, it's not going to recover by June. And we know the heaviest period of usage down here is going to be the summer months. Maybe we need to go to a planned on even regardless, don't wait for the numbers to come in. Just say, next May one, we're going to start.
I think that's why that, that's why that ordinance is recommended. You know?
That's why I asked the solicitor draft one.
Right. And I think that's very important to look at. As far as I've already explained earlier in some of the meetings and what we are doing to be proactive about it. And this is why I was reluctant to, to, you know, to, to lift the water restrictions until we see some improvement. Because I understand people want to irrigate, seed, power wash their homes. But if we don't have that resource, I have to look forward thinking as well through the winter. We just had a winter drought. I need to look forward thinking as well. And that's why I've been reluctant to, to adjust those water restrictions. So we are looking, you know, as I, as I mentioned before, we're looking for another source. That's not easy to find, especially within our region. I only have a limited area where I'm allowed to look as well. So we are, we are doing a lot of work and as, as far as, you know, what we can do for the future. But what we have to do now is, you know, protect that, that water source and aquifer, so, aquifer. The, the other thing is, you know, as well, is we have water to do what our need, you know, our daily needs. We come into that irrigation point where, you know, you've got to imagine, you know, the trout tank, the Tower Hill tank that's out there, that's a million gallons, you know? Do we want to dump a million gallons on our lawns on a daily basis for three months, four months? Uh, because that's what the irrigation is. You know, you're looking at emptying that tank onto the ground on a daily basis. There's some other ways, you know, we, we can all work together. So we are looking at what we can do for other sources, but we also look at, you know, the conservation, like I said.
So I, I had a, I have a one, one suggestion that I think would be a pretty low cost and possibly a good P R move for Violia. And that would be rain barrels. Rain barrels could be had for fifty or a hundred dollars. And we could, you know, maybe you guys could subsidize some of that for us to distribute to our customers. And then that way, when we do get three inches of rain in an hour, we could possibly save some of it. I mean, there's other things that we could do also, but that could be one, like, very simple and pretty inexpensive thing to do. My other question is just because I've been asked about it, goes along with what Councilwoman Bergner has discussed, the fire burns. So I'm asking about our, our fire training house that we have in South Kingston where it's right at Asa Pond where firefighters come and there, there's a house that they set on fire and, and, you know? So do the fire, does the fire department have free rein to use that facility for training purposes any day that they want? Or are you restricting them?
Uh, I've never personally restricted them and as far as I'm concerned, that's part of the fire protection and essential use. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't block them. Uh, if there was misunderstanding, you know, that?
I, I, I have the answer for that.
Yeah.
Unified district did not request to have their training. That's why there was confusion and I talked to the chief about it. That's public safety. They will not be restricted.
I, I just want to make sure that everybody real, everybody knows that because there's, you know, been some concern about that.
Yeah, and once I, once I brought to Chris's attention, he agreed that that's a public safety issue, whether it's fire safety of any type, they will not be restricted.
Go ahead.
So I think we're on the same page, Patty, again. So I do think we need to think about rain barrels. And I was, I was, literally what I was going to say is either Violia or the town, we allocate some money. I had a conversation with Jim about some other topic and he said eighty people show up for a free compost bin and that program sells out.
A hundred and thirty showed up for a hundred bins.
Oh, yeah, there you go. That's it. So eight, so there's interest. So we either need to allocate money from, from something, from Make-A-Fund or Viola does a one-for-one match and we start doing that. Is it something that there's a group at the high school, maybe we could train?
Oh, the Sustainability Committee with?
Well, but if, but just like the carpentry students, we're going to do the kayak racks. Is there some way to have high school students be, you know, trained rain barrel assistants? Or, you know, some sort of thing that people could, because like, it's not?
With Recycle, the Charlotte can or the new recycling coordinator, she would be great?
It's just not as easy to do. It sounds like a great idea, but you have to hook it up to your gutter and then you, you know, like to downspout it in.
I know, yeah.
So we definitely need to do that. We definitely, we definitely need an ordinance and I know it's coming in December. I do want to use this opportunity to, we probably should have a short work session where we work out the gist of what we want to present to the community. And then the public hearing is us presenting that to the community for their reaction. Because there's a lot of moving parts with the ordinance and how comfortable we feel. I think, you know, change, this will be a change, even though it's the same. The other thing, as I would say, is we need to look at use now. I didn't realize that power washing was prohibited. So we are restricting businesses from making money, although people are still power washing their houses. The bank is still using, you know, water or whatever, everyone's. I think people have gone game on a, a long time ago. And it's only Violia saying that there's a water ban. To me, people are just business as usual. But we do, but we do need an ordinance and we do need rain barrels. And so, and it's going to have to come in the C I P or some, at least, cost it out, Jim, if we can do the same number of compost bins as what rain barrels every year.
Well, the compost bins were paid for with a grant.
Well, the compost bins were paid for with a grant. The rain barrels would be something different, but we can certainly look into it. I will ask, I will talk to Charlotte about it. As far as the ordinance goes, you know, I even spoke with Amy Goins today, and we've talked and we've gone back and forth a number of times. So we're, you know, she's working now to put together after our discussions, but a real good sort of skeleton of that. And I think it's her idea to just say, okay, in December, let's bring something to the council, but before it really, it's not going to be final or anything, but at least give the council an opportunity to call it sort of a work session in a sense. So the discussion really is even more along the lines of, well, how do we divide up the district? So we have Veolia on one side, we have South Shore over here, we got Middle Bridge over here, you know, maybe it's a matter of separating them all each individually in half. I've already talked with the GIS coordinator about developing what those maps would be, so we'll have to do that as well. So you'll have an opportunity in December to see all of that and then take it wherever it needs to go.
Rich, are you potentially sort of inferring that there could be a different set of regulations for different parts of the town here?
Well, what I'm inferring is that it would be, it would be regulatory within the Veolia district, so whatever is being supplied by Veolia.
So whatever we pass would only apply to, you know, water provided by Veolia?
It would be passed, it would be passed to properties that are receiving water from a public water supply of a certain size, and we'll work on that definition.
Can I also bring up this great program, Conserve Rebates Veolia, where you guys are offering rebates for the purchase of showerheads, toilets, urinals, washers, looks like only available right now to Veolia customers in Rockland, Orange, Putnam, Tioga, and Westchester County. That would be New York. So it looks like you guys have a pretty robust program of encouraging water conservation in other places. So we would really like to see that in South Kingstown.
Yeah, and so we're going, you know, we'll be coming up with a rate case soon, and that's something we can attach in there.
Yeah, super, very important now that we see that you're doing it elsewhere.
Yeah, and that group is from our own division. We're part of the New York Division because we're the only regulated unit within, this far from New England, so we, I mean, New England, so we've been attached to the New York Division. So those are all programs that we have availability, and we're looking into kind of rolling some of those over anyways within the new rate case. And then previously, we've given away, which I need to make a new order, is the outdoor and indoor conservation kits that we give out for free at the office. Those are some of the things. And then going back to the rain barrels, it's preliminary right now, but I did have a good conversation with Rep. Tansey last week, and we discussed something similar to it. She had suggested rain barrels. And I looked at it previously, but that program kind of died. But we have barrels that we can't get rid of from our zinc orthophosphate. That's something I got to see if we're able to clean those out and reuse those. Right now, they just, they won't, they don't take those back. Normally, chemical companies will return those back and reuse them, but those don't. So that's a, that's a good source for us to be able to look at instead of turning, you know, instead of it being waste, turn it into something positive. So we'd had that conversation last week.
Yeah, that would be great. We would love to hear more about that, I think.
Yeah, I've got, like I said, that's preliminary thought, but we've got, I have to be able to see, you know, the way we clean them and so on, if we can reuse them in that manner.
All right, thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Back to Rich, if you don't mind, Chris. Your comment a minute ago about a regulatory scheme that would only apply to Veolia's customers?
So you know what? Can I correct myself on that?
Please.
It's going to apply however you want to see it applied, okay? That's what I would rather say. So you'll have that option at that time.
Right. One of the questions for council to figure out is, you know, jurisdiction over Veolia's customers. We've got our own customers. There's Kingston, which operates within South Kingstown, but I don't know that we have any jurisdiction over it. And then the other question is, we have people all over town with private wells, but they're drawing down from the same aquifer that pushes him to declare...
Right. I, you know, I can let the solicitor answer, but we have jurisdiction over properties. You know, we don't have jurisdiction over water companies. So there's a division, but...
We can make it sound like that.
Right. That's what I'm driving at, if that's what you decide, but...
Well, that's, that's the point that I thought I needed to make.
And I'm talking about, and as Jim is whispering, it's like, wells, I haven't looked into that, people's private wells, that's a whole different...
Those wells go into an aquifer. But I get the point.
I get that, but I don't know whether or not we, by ordinance, can do something about private wells without a lot of science showing how that well, where it's drawing from, how it's affected. So I just wanted to be clear, what you get may not address that.
And that's fine. I just wanted to raise the issue now so that we can have that discussion.
All right. Good discussion. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Chris.
Chris, we're down for the field trip sometime, too, just to let you know.
Absolutely.
Rich knows we're down. I'm down for the field trip.
Yeah. And hopefully more good news to come. Getting out of the water ban, getting out of the odd even, that's where we're hoping to be soon.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Me, too.
So. Thanks. So we'll jump ahead just so, because Ken Burke's looking pretty tired in that corner over there, so. Actually, well, I think the update in the ordinance prohibiting use of the South County bike path from Dust of Dawn should go next, and then we'll get back to the other ones if there's sufficient time. So just to brief you on what, why that's on, the last time we spoke about the Dust to Dawn bike path being prohibited, you asked me to reach out to Rowland DOT to see if, whatever you're eating looks really good, but... No, I'm liking. No, I'm good. But I did, you asked me to reach out to Rowland DOT to see if they would be willing to make upgrades in the bike path, which could assist in the safety of the bike path, which could then, you could make your decision based on that. So I did reach out to DOT the next day. They were very forthcoming. Yes, tell us what you need, and we will do the best to accommodate you. So what I asked for was street lighting at the intersections where the bike path intersects the streets in this town, which there's many. We have the most in the state of the intersections and the bike path crossing. And also asked for flashing stop signs, very similar to the ones in Narragansett where the Mumford School is, where the elementary school is, when you go down the hill, that one flashes. Whether they're motion censored, that would be good. So their answer was yes. We will help. We will, we will do it. Now, but we needed to get very specific with DOT on what we need. So we're running that on two parallel angles. One is on public safety, the chief police is researching on what intersections we would absolutely need, streetlights and flashing stop signs. And also Parks and Rec, Rex Everly, who uses the bike path a lot, and Terry Murphy are working on creating their own to make sure that we've got all the bases covered. So that looks like it's in the works, not going to happen overnight, it's going, you know how it works. Once we get a plan, it's going to take a while to get the lighting implemented. But DOT, to summarize, is willing to improve the bike path for us.
That's fantastic news. Thank you for following up with that. Looking forward to Terry and the chief's recommendations. And kudos to the members of the public that came out last meeting and advocated for this and changed the day.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Next, we'll go to the next shortest one is Brian Sylvia.
Before this evening is the quarterly financial for the first quarter of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2526. I provided a package that was included, I provided the report that was included in the package. I was going to turn to page revenue one. On that page, you'll be able to see that is the third page of the packet, but on that page, you'll be able to see that the town has collected $19 million of their $34 million budget. I want to dig into that a little bit further, just so it's a little understanding that's, and looking at that, it looks like we're, we have, we've collected 56% of our revenue through the first quarter. So I just wanted to expand on that a little bit. Total revenues for the town is $93,300,000, for which we've collected $30,900,000. That's separate and apart from our operating transfer out, which is, that's $59 million. That's made up of the schools, 56 million, the debt service, 2.3 million, and then combined for rec center and senior center are about $1 million. So of our actual total revenues, the $93 million, we've collected about 33.12%, which is right on a par with where we were last year, 33.03% at this time. We're a little bit lower. This is where I wanted to dig into this and just provide some explanations. We're a little bit lower on the operating transfers out right now. We were only at 19% for the year so far, which that can be attributed to, we spent on the schools as needed, and the first few months of the year, they weren't in session, so they were a little lower. So that will, the operating transfer out will creep up, with the town will make our contributions to the schools, debt service, et cetera. So those will catch up. And the revenue, as I mentioned, we are on a par right with where we were with prior last year. And on the expense side, again, that's a little more straightforward. We are, we've expended for the first quarter 26.58% of our budget for the year, right on par. Again, at this time last year, we were at 25.61%. So we're right, we have a few departments, a few areas where we do fully expend, fully expend for the whole year, some of our insurances, contributions to the outside agencies, things of that nature, expend for the whole year already. So that drives up the first quarter a little bit, that's why we're a little over the 25%. But again, we're right on par with prior years.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Go ahead.
Brian, with respect to... Oh, sorry. With respect to your notes on investment income, I just wanted to ask you to explain the difference between last year and this year. You indicate that we've collected investment income, 287,830, 32.1 for the year as to the budget.
Yes.
And then last year was 811,249, which was 121.99% of the budget amount.
Yes.
Which is huge for the first quarter.
Yes.
Can you just explain the difference between the two?
Absolutely. So last year, every year, the town has a good amount of funds, approximately, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have so much funds that are invested in bonds. And those get reset after year end, and we had a large adjustment in the prior fiscal year from that. So there was a revenue last year that, $800,000, approximately $300,000 of that was a reclass from, to reset us at year end. This year, our reset was much less, about $50,000, $60,000, so that's where you see that swing. We are down, just as, I did look at this today, actually, because it is concerning, and that was a good question. For September, for the month of September this year versus last year, we were down $60,000. So the rates are coming down. We are going to start taking in some less revenue, but a lot of that was from our GASB adjustment for the bonds.
Well, sorry. And we'll still be good by the end of the year in terms of what we budgeted?
Yes. We're right on, we're a little ahead of course, so we're fine.
Thank you.
Yes.
Brian, just to follow up on that, quarter one comparison year over year here, we see the, I guess, the disparity there, the large amount a year ago as compared to now. A lot of that relates to all the ARPA monies that we had invested. Am I correct there? As we've spent that down, you know, we don't have as much monies invested, we don't have as much investment income being generated. Isn't that a, is that a part of it?
That's a part as well. A large piece is that, that GASB reset, but yes, that is, that is a part of it. We've certainly moved the ARPA funds out the door. We have some things that are still encumbered that we haven't paid yet, but of that 9.7 million dollars, there's very little left in the bank at this point. We have a few bills left to pay, but yes.
Just for the sake of the public who might be watching this, and I'm bound to get this wrong, Government Accounting Standards Bureau, Jack Gassby?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Government Accounting Standards Board?
Board, yes.
All right, thank you, Brian.
The last item is a quick report on the village enhancements that we've been seeing all summer, and Luke will do a brief slideshow on that.
I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the manager's time. He thinks I bamboozled him because he said five slides, and I'm going to give you 10, so. But it's a good thing, because we'd always get to tell some of the good projects we do in town, and I know the council's been really supportive, the manager's been supportive on a lot of these projects. So I think it's, it's time we do a year-end review, and then we can also see where we're going with the village enhancements. So this year, we've put a lot of concentration on the village enhancements. The manager and I have met frequently with the Wakefield Village Association, and we realize that's the heartbeat of our district. So, and there's a lot of eyes on, on Wakefield. So really starting there and using, leveraging a lot of our opportunities over the past years. So I'm going to go over the site furnishing updates, with installation of some planters that we did, rails and fencing upgrades, streets gate maintenance workers, some of the event and planning support. One thing I will not cover tonight is the facade enhancement initiative. Jamie has given you reports on that before. That is ongoing. That is an ARPA-funded initiative, and I'm sure he'll be giving updates in the future on that. So the site furnishings along Main Street. You may have noticed that several have popped up. We've currently done 12 benches, 12 planters. We have four trash receptacles in inventory. We haven't deployed those yet because it got near the end of the season. That was funded through that $200,000 allocation that the town council graciously supported, and that's going to afford many more furnishings that are going to be going, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But we rolled out the first kind of test this year. I want to give a shout out to our highway department who installed them all, did a great job laying them out. We have a whole plan to add more, and we've already gotten requests more, but the feedback so far is outstanding from all the business owners and visitors to the district. So hopefully you like them. The planters were done by Clark Farms. We did pay for that out of the village fund, and I'll talk a little bit about the village infrastructure fund in a minute. But you may have noticed they've grown in really well, and below those plants is actually a watering container that you can fill up, and it sustains them for days. So that was one of the things we kept getting. Well, how are you going to be able to maintain it? That's one way we kind of built in that mechanism. Saw a Tucket River Bridge planters. This was funded through the village infrastructure fund. It was built by volunteers. I want to give a shout out to Jen and Evan Nock and Sarah from the glass shop, who really helped me. I was one of the builders. Actually, highway, we built them at the highway facility. You can see on the left here, there was a jig that we made to paint them all. Literally, the paint was drying as we were putting them up for the Riverfire event. So I also want to give a shout out to the farmer's daughter who donated all of the plants for that, and the WVA for really coming through on that. So that was a really great thing. We got nothing but compliments on that for the Riverfire event, and I think it's something that was well received, and people will be expecting next year. One addition that we will be doing next year, and I've committed to, is running a drip irrigation system through there, so that way we don't have to water those in the future. But they actually were sustained this year, and I think it was, it was a good add, value add. Riverwalk fence and rail enhancements, these were funded through ARPA. Now, again, this was a parks allocation, the powder coating of the barrier fencing, and I want to give out a shout out to Rex Everly, our parks superintendent. He had gotten pricing upwards of $100,000. I think we ended up down at about $40,000. To take all those off, powder coat them, put them back on, the parks crew power washed everything. And then we also replaced that green fence, which is a very large fence against Paul Massey that was literally falling over. So that was the ARPA work that went to good use. I think people notice this stuff as they walk through the district. It speaks of a well-maintained municipality, and I think that really comes through. And we have some other improvements coming up for the upcoming year. Another thing that was funded through the village infrastructure fund, part-time seasonal staff. So the manager can tell you, he got a lot of complaints last year about weed growth and just the uncut nature of the district. And it's not for lack of unwilling to pay attention to it, there's just a lot of things to do in the summer. When the grass is growing, people are mowing, right? And our highway staff is extended, so is our park... And our highway staff is extended, so is our park staff, so we had to find a way to try to supplement that. One way to do it was to hire a couple low-cost staff on a seasonal basis to do it. Here's a picture of the two ladies to the left-hand side, Shazelle and, remember, Tasha. They're actually, Tasha's local, she lives right around the corner, minimum wage job, but they did a great job picking the weeds, making sure the plants were all watered. We bought tools for them that are stored at the comfort station. You can see on the right, there's a basement there. We equipped these workers with the tools they needed. They went out all summer and did the work. So hoping to expand this coming up. It was a very low-cost initiative that had, I think, a very positive impact. Nothing but compliments that we heard throughout the district. And you can see there, on a total of the program, and this includes all the tools that we bought, everything that equipped the program was around $12,000 and about $5,500 for the entire summer for salary-related costs. So I think the bang for buck there was, was good. Event programming support, as I said, we've been meeting with the WVA. They've been trying to really ramp up their programming. The Contemporary had taken a certain amount of that programming, so Oktoberfest and some of those events. WVA has taken Water Fire, they just did a trick-or-treat event, they want to have a holiday fest. So we're really working with them in collaboration to try to say, how can we support on the infrastructure side, because that's kind of our gig as a municipality, and have you step up on raising funds for the programming and to really enliven these spaces, including Saga Tucket Park. So I think they had some, some good new initiatives. They brought a lot of that over to the park this year. Rich, you know, give him a shout out, DPS, they continue to support the holiday lights, and that's something that he's asked for replacement of those lights. Those need to be upgraded to more commercial light, and again, that's a village infrastructure fund cost, as well as the banner program. WVA has been collaborating on that. There will be an evergreen planted in Saga Tucket Park for the upcoming holiday, a large evergreen that they can light up, have some pride in. There's really no space, good space, to plant a large tree along Main Street, so they've requested some space in the park to do so. So I wanted to just really quickly review, I mentioned this a few times, the village infrastructure fund. So we had this discussion tonight about the real estate conveyance tax. One thing that's really never been brought up is the fact that in 2021, the council at that time had set up this small fund, it was $10,000 per year, called the village infrastructure fund, funded through the real estate conveyance tax, and it's never really referred to because it's not a significant, significant amount when we're talking about $450,000, as we said earlier, going into the different funds. So originally, it was open space and affordable housing, and I think this got kind of caught up in the reallocation of funds when the council moved everything over to the affordable housing funds, which, you know, it's council's prerogative to do, but I don't know if you were aware of it. So I wanted to bring it to your attention because it effectively shut the spigot off on this program. Now, that said, the program hadn't been really used up until this year. We realized this funding was there, we had a need, we really wanted to get this launched on a pilot project and see, hey, what happens if we start paying a little bit more attention and use some of these funds in that direction. So I think for the cost that we spent out this year, when I want to say it was under $15,000, we got a lot done, and I think the WVA and the other partners were really appreciative. But I just wanted to bring this to your attention, there was $40,000 initially in that fund. It's been depleted down this year. I would expect to deplete it potentially entirely next year, or the year after. So unless we restore funding in some way, and that doesn't have to be real estate conveyance tax, it could be through the general fund, it could be through other sources, but I just want to bring your attention, if you want to continue this as a council, as a policy initiative, it will have to start refunding it. I think $10,000 a year is, is appropriate for the program right now on the level of service. If you were to want to expand it based on the model that we do to, let's say, Peastale or another village, then that discussion would have to happen about up, upfunding the program. So improvements for 2026, I had mentioned irrigation to the Riverwalk planter hooks. We have 10 benches and four trash receptacles currently on water for Saga Tucket Park, and Rex and his team are prepared to drop in concrete pads for all of that. For the, ideally, I was trying to get it done in the fall. It may have to wait until spring, depending on delivery. We're going to be replacing, you can see on the right here, there's a bench with a rusted end on it. There's furnishings on the Riverwalk now that are, that are rusting. They're old, but we're not going to get rid of them. The plan is to take them out. We can send them back to the manufacturer because they're really well, they're a good product. That product has probably been installed for 30 years. It's, it's aged. We can sandblast it, re-power coat it for low cost, and our plan is to take it over to the Hazard Memorial Garden as part of the, the community learning center enhancements, and then we'll put matching ones in this place that'll match the ones along Main Street and Saga Tucket Park. So it's a really good way to kind of refurb and reuse. Repaving of the Riverwalk, there was some ARPA funds available, and again, Rex and Terry and their team are going to be repaving the Riverwalk. It's, you can't really see it here, there's a lot of waviness and roots that have come through, so that'll be redone. Continued enhancements to the streetscape program, hopefully, we'll get vests that have Team SK, you know, the green team out there for next year, and do a summer cleanup, so that would be helpful. And then completion of the facade improvement program, which, again, you'll get updates on separately. The very last thing I promised is Robinson Square, all of which you've probably gone by a million times, but never knew it was probably called that. But it's at the end of High Street where it comes in the Main Street. That's a rather wide intersection, very difficult to get out. We've looked at redesigning that space, and kudos to the planning department. They went out last year and got a Main Streets grant through RICC in the amount of $350,000. So that will be going to RFQ for a designer who hopefully can look at that intersection to reconfigure it. The goal there, there's a lot of untapped space on that corner that could be used as a civic space for the town, because it drops off to the building and the river, that could be retained, flattened. Picture that intersection narrower and more controlled, that affords some additional space and also addresses some traffic concerns. All of which have to be coordinated with DOT and our engineering staff. So that's a, a process that'll play out over the next year with collaboration of planning, DPS, and others. But I think it'll be a great project to see kind of come to fruition, and whether we have enough money out of that $350 to do it all, I don't know, but we'll, we'll certainly work towards that. So hopefully, I didn't take up too much of your time. Glad to entertain any questions that you have, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Luke. All right, it's now going to bring us to, anything further, Jim?
No, that's it. I, I just want to say, I walk Main Street just about every day since those planters went up, since the benches went up, since we've hired the part-time personnel. It's money well spent. I can see the difference on Main Street my own, but also, I can see, I've talked to many of the shop owners, they see the result as well. It's money well spent, so we'll hope and continue that next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We've been getting a lot of compliments from residents. People are very happy with the work. Thank you.
All right, it's now going to bring us to public comments.
Anyone in the audience is interested in speaking on any matter, invite a come on up, including any directors or the manager, the solicitor, town clerk. All right, seeing none?
So I just want, because this isn't, I would ask you to think it's 10:50, and if you were sitting in the public waiting to speak, you would have probably gone home by now. So just, I know this is a new agenda, I'm not trying to change it, but in the future, we should think about that. If nobody wants to speak on new business, do we want to say, we're going to let the public speak for 30 minutes and, and let them talk? Because I, I have spent a lot of time sitting in the chairs, and people have spent a lot of time waiting, and if, if you had to wait till 10:50, you may be sleeping in the chair by this time. So something to think about, because that person took time out of their day, they have a concern, they didn't write an email, they just showed up to say, I want to give, I want to give my opinion. So I would definitely want to be more sensitive if, if anyone was here. And the way to, you know, moderate some of this, if there was 50 people here who wanted to talk, you shrink the five minutes to three minutes and say, this is, we get 10 people and not six. You could ascertain who's planning on speaking and then just have a better way of moderating that, but that's...
Yes, I mean, we always remain flexible.
So...
We always try to read what's going on, you know, anticipate what's to be of interest, what's not.
I know, it was very nice of you for Bob.
How about the next meeting? We, I would agree, you know, that it's pretty late for a public comment, so how about the next meeting? We'll try the same, only add the 30 minutes for anyone to come up and talk and see how well that works. Would that be okay?
Works for me.
It's fine. And then I just wanted to speak during public comment for a second. I just wanted to say, I know Jim wasn't here on Friday, but the tree planting was a really great dedication, and Kenny left, and we, there was a lot of very meaningful, beautiful speakers, and Mike was there, and we were all there, sorry, and it just was really moving to plant the little red maple tree, and I'm looking forward to like, either some, some sort of video or some montage, because it would look like a lot of media on it, but it was a really beautiful ceremony, and it was well done.
All right, any other thoughts from council members before we move on?
Here, here.
All right, it's going to bring us to communication item 12A, an email dated October 15, 2025, from Janine Silversmith, entering her resignation from the Sustainability Committee effective December 15, 2025.
Mr. President, I do have something to say about that. If you notice, effective December 15th, so it's in a month and, or two months from now, I've heard a rumor that the Sustainability and the Conservation Commission want to merge at some point and want to come up to us and let us know that. You'll see on the second last page of the agenda, 1, 2, 3, 4 did not wish to be reappointed. It's not that they don't want to serve the community, but I think that they're doing that in order for the council to have a better option of merging the two committees. And that's a rumor that I heard, and I wanted to let you all know, so.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item?
A move that we accept Janine Silversmith's resignation and direct the town clerk to thank her for her service.
Second.